Oh.
I know, I didn't know it got bad here.
Mostly this is eminently recyclable, but.
Yeah.
But every once in a while, some cool stuff.
Oh, that's okay.
What?
We have a big problem.
There's no clock.
It's right here.
Oh, there it is.
We're on holiday time.
A thing who does not like change.
What?
Why don't they talk to us?
Lori, I'll be able to get through the night now. Thank you.
Be about any time you want.
They look like a hard copy of a budget that's out here on the table. Did everybody get my email yesterday? Okay?
Yes.
Email. Good.
Yeah, Verizon.
No. I think it's just my phone. I don't want to consider getting a phone, but.
Andrew has put some snacks out for us this evening, so if anybody wants to grab a snack, you certainly may.
Is the wine somewhere else?
Yes, it is somewhere.
It was that? Yeah, but what's in the egg now?
Just egg. No, no. Yeah, this is. I love egg, no, but it's like ninety percent sugar.
Oh, yeah, that's why I like it.
We've got a couple of minutes, so while everybody's getting ready, I'll kind of let you know that we're going to do an awards presentation tonight to Scott, Carol, and Celeste Cares. But they're also having a school event, so it'll be here between seven and seven thirty. So whenever they get here, wherever we are in the agenda, the next thing would be that award, but we will play that by ear.
Shannon, would you grab me one too?
Lime margarita or ginger mule?
Ginger mule.
Whoa. I thought Andrew always.
Now we're talking.
I ran out a little bit. Anybody else?
Could I have a ginger?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Try to be a little bit best.
Make sure the spirit pours and bites down. Not alcohol to you.
Thank you.
See, we got Lori on there, Dan Daley. Okay.
It's more interesting. She got me in on because I've never tried the margarita.
You're not into just one.
I'm inviting.
Everybody feel like they're ready?
So ready.
In which case, it is six o'clock. I call the city council meeting December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three to order. We'll call, please.
Here. Councilmember Phil.
President.
Councilmember Laura.
Here.
Councilmember Grant.
Present.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Mayor of Portland Green.
Here.
Mayor Lawrence.
Here. At this time, we have the official pledge of allegiance or moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. This time, I would ask for approval of the agenda.
Grant moves to approve the agenda.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All were in favor. Housekeeping matters. Anything anybody would like to touch on before we get rolling?
I just wanted to say thank you for our lovely city party.
That's fine.
Well, I've got one quick one, too. Thanks to Lori and to the city for supporting the St. George grant application.
So much.
Out of historical.
I heard that you were successful.
Yes, successful. Found out just last Friday. So two hundred fifty thousand dollars for the church. Wow.
Will that be for renovation, exterior renovation, or what is it for?
Primarily interior. They're going to work mostly on the floor and then ventilation up in the attic.
Excellent.
Yeah, super excited.
Because you've already done quite a bit on the outside in the last couple of years, right?
Yeah, it was repainted last summer.
Good.
Got some of the woodwork.
Congratulations. That's really nice.
Well, thanks to the city for their support.
Thank you, Lauren. Hope she heard you.
Yeah, yeah, I got a thumbs up. Very good.
I think everybody knows this, but let's clarify that we're going to move the oaths of office for the new mayor and city council members to the ninth. So there will not be a city council meeting on January second. We'll have one on the ninth, and then we'll have one on the sixteenth. So it would be two weeks back to back. Those would be the two city council meetings in January.
Already kind of used them.
I thought it's our last meeting.
Huh?
It's our last meeting.
It is. Well, we'll be seated at that last meeting for ten minutes or so. But this is our last meeting. Tracy, thank you. Okay. Um. Any other housekeeping matters? At this time, we would encourage any public comments on items on the agenda. If you would like to speak, come up, introduce yourself. You have three minutes. Steve.
Right. Call is five. Four. My name is Steve Press. I actually live in Leadville, Colorado. I had in the past talked about a measure that I understand Vermont has for limiting property flipping. As I was explaining to you by Vermont lawyer, and I wasn't able to research anything further on, that it's on the state constitution and habitat protection and a local community can invoke that. And then it'd say you want to flip the property. Hey, that's great. You want to wait to two years, you have the capital grains, fine. But if you flip your property and the variable could be like within seven years, then another variable could be like you pay thirty-five percent of your debt. And my understanding is that that's slowed down that property flipping considerably. The real yard sadly was something that was calculated to accelerate that kind of property flipping from my perspective. Then I asked, I came and I asked Andrew to put this in your package. It said, Denver Post, December eighth, was, did that get in there? I did, and it's off to. Okay, whether it's in there or not, I don't know. There was an article in Denver paper that talked about how Congress, Democratic Congress, wanted to put legislation through. And so it'll be up to the Republicans to, of course, slow that down about getting investors and corporations out of loaning public property, I mean, single-family homes. I wish you had a down copy of this article. Interesting article. So I'm going to have two minutes and ten seconds. So according to this article, they said that in two thousand and twenty-two, I think it was, investors own, purchase seventy percent of the city homes in Charlotte, North Carolina. So getting these investors and these property interests out of single-family homes is a big thing. And this resonates with what the city council wants to do as far as investing with, investing some of the city's savings into some type of investment group. If they're investing in single property homes, that's a bad thing because you don't want to have. So the proposition was in ten years, they'll be out of the property business. So thank you kindly.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak to city council? Okay. Next up, we have a consent agenda. I do want to say this consent agenda has something on it that I need to spend actually some time on. And that has to do with the appointment of three new board members to Leadville Housing Authority. This is on the consent agenda. I don't have a problem with that, but I'd like to make sure he understands, first of all, that we have a housing authority, that it has a five-member board. And we lost some people. We lost Dan Osborne. We lost Kim Jackson, and we lost Noah Sausen off of that board. And so they're going to replace them with three new people. I think that's great. That board's main function is to operate the Leadville mayor, Mount Massett mayor, which is a section eight property. So the process was followed. Adam sent out, you know, solicited letters of interest. He got letters of interest. He interviewed people. These are the three people that they would like to have on the board. So I just want to make sure it was clear in the process that he went through. I was, I was, in talking to him, I was very satisfied that he'd done a good job of selecting three new members. Any questions about that? Okay, in this case, we have a consent agenda. Of course, it includes the four resolutions for the four nonprofits that we had chosen to use twenty twenty-three money. Hope you got my note today on that.
I did. Didn't quite answer.
Okay, got it. All right. Twenty twenty-three money that was, that was there and that we had an opportunity to help some of these organizations. So also the minutes and then the resolution on the three new candidates for the housing authority board.
I will say, as I mentioned during the presentation, once again, just for transparency sake, I am employed by C four. And I will be abstaining from voting on that, though, since it's on the consent agenda. I don't know if I'd just abstain from the whole consent agenda.
You actually have to recuse yourself. Abstaining is a no vote. So, thank you.
Hi, guys.
We'll see in about sixty seconds. In which case, if everybody's comfortable with the consent agenda, I would entertain a motion, please.
We're at some move to improve their consent agenda.
Thomas seconds.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And there is one recusal. Okay. Thank you very much. Christian, you didn't leave, did you? We're going to go into the department reports. And we will start with the city administrative report.
All right, great. Thank you. As the first item, I would just like to introduce one of our newest employees. Andrew Cummins has joined us as our administrative assistant, and the awesome thing is that the snacks tonight, in honor of our last meeting, are Andrew's doing. So thank you, Andrew, for doing that. So Andrew is a longtime local president and has joined us to support essentially the administration part of the city hall. And at this time, I think the mayor gave Andrew a heads up. This is where we put him on the spot and just say, welcome, Andrew, and if there's anything that you would like to say.
Welcome, Andrew.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
Well, you keep bringing snacks. You're going to be very well.
Well, Andrew's already helped with one of the consent item resolutions, so we're putting him to work. Well, Andrew's already helped with, uh, one of the consent item, uh, resolutions, so we're putting him to work really quickly. Uh, the second thing is I owe Mr. Prestash an apology because, um, uh, and Mr. Cummins did give me the article that Mr. Prestash referenced, and I misunderstood, I thought that Mr. Prestash was just going to comment on it during public comment. But I do have a copy of that article, so I will go ahead and scan it in and send it around to everybody. I did think it was very interesting. Um, I mean, I, I think the legislation is, is an interesting, uh, tactic to divest hedge funds for investing in single-family homes. Uh, the article's a little, as Mr. Prestash said, pessimistic that the legislation would pass, but there it is, so, uh, those are, I owe Mr. Prestash an apology on that one. A couple other, uh, nice things to announce. The Central Mountain Regional Emergency Trauma Advisory Council, uh, is, uh, they, uh, awarded three of their six yearly awards to Lake County Emergency Service Personnel. So this is really cool, that our, our own chief Steve Boyle received the Public Safety Official of the Year Award. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, uh, Chief Boyle does a fantastic job for our fire department, but he is the Public Safety Official of the Year. Um, the ALS Provider of the Year was Kayla DiCosta, and just so you know, the EMS Leader of the Year was Jeremiah Grantham. So, congratulations to three, we had three out of the six awardees, so that's awesome. Um, following up on a couple of other things from our last meeting, uh, the mayor and our finance director met with Brett Parsons of the Colorado Trust. And he did talk to us, and I think we teed this up a little bit about investing some of our money that's currently just in operating accounts in, uh, investments that would give us a better return, and interestingly, what he said was, we were one of the first clients of the Colorado Trust back in nineteen eighty-six. So remember when we talked about, you know, how, um, were we a part of this, had we ever been a part of it? So apparently, we were a member of the Colorado Trust from nineteen eighty-six to two thousand sixteen. And under that, finance director Roy Guinness, for some reason, he exited the trust, we don't really know why. So what I'd like to do is, um, have Mr. Parsons come and do a presentation to you all at your January sixteenth, uh, council meeting. And even potentially have, they have a template resolution to, um, we can put on that agenda as well, if we decide that we would like to go ahead and invest in the trust, we would need to pass a resolution. Um, so just team that up for the January sixteenth meeting. Uh, we just completed our national cybersecurity review, I did that with our IT, um, uh, vendor, Dan Rabbinowitz. Uh, that is a really, uh, essential component of, uh, Claire Skeen's work to get and obtain federal grants for cybersecurity and infrastructure security, so we got that completed by December fifteenth. Uh, confirming one thing that I also brought up in the January, um, in the last meeting, on January twenty-third, I've confirmed that our city attorneys, um, can come and do their city council training. So this is a refresher training for those folks who are continuing city council members, but is really essential training for new council members. They estimate that it would be about sixty to ninety minutes. And so I've confirmed that, hopefully you, um, I penciled that in for the work session previously, but I have confirmed that since, uh, our last meeting, so January twenty-third, six P M. I walk also, I'm also working with Sam Light, who is the general counsel for our insurance company, Sursa. And he is not able to come on the twenty-third, I'm working on some dates for him to come in, uh, February. He also does, uh, an ethics and, uh, liabilities training. It may cover the same things as our city attorney, but it is also very helpful, I'm gonna have, um, Hillary, Hillary and or Ellie sit in on those, um, at training from Sursa. Just so if there's any question about, you know, something they said versus what's something Sursa is saying, we can have that clarified. But I haven't pinned down a date for that one just yet, it, it's gonna be sometime in February. Um, in other news, I don't know if you all remember, but the first ordinance that we passed in, uh, this calendar year, so in January twenty twenty-three was in a temporary moratorium on O H B business licenses. And I hadn't forgotten about that, but it expires on January eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. So we were told, um, by our city attorney that we really couldn't do, you know, a permanent moratorium, but we put a temporary moratorium in place for a year so that we could work on some solutions. So what I've asked our, um, city attorney's office to do is work on, um, a similar approach, working through the business license regulation aspect, uh, to look and look at putting together an ordinance for us that would potentially cap the number of O H B licenses for, um, guiding, uh, renting, and, uh, I think the other word was leasing that we use. But at some point, we are going to have to decide what we would like to do about that, and I would like to have something teed up so that we don't have a gap, or we only have a small gap between when the moratorium expires and when we might have some, um, proposals out. For those of you who weren't here, we didn't get a ton, uh, now I know the counties had some big meetings, lots of public input, ours was less contentious because essentially our O H B, uh, issues are related to, uh, basically speeding, um, safety and noise. Those are the issues that, that O H Bs create within the city limits itself, the land use, we don't really have much land within the city that O H Bs tend to recreate on, so those are our, uh, parameters where we were finding some friction within our community and wanted to get ahead of it, as you probably have seen in the news, many other communities have, um, really had this issue be, uh, much bigger and much more contentious than ours was. But, you know, it, essentially, we had a temporary moratorium on new licenses, our existing businesses obviously didn't seem to have an issue with that, and just updating you, we all, we have not as a city had any applications for any new business licenses for O H B renting, leasing, or guiding since our moratorium. So that's where we are.
I'd like to, I'd like to interject, an important part of this to me, um, is that, that when you do this ordinance, and it limits the number of, of, uh, guiding services in the city, uh, that, one of the things we talked about, that, that I knew was important to me, is that you did not allow leasing, did not allow rentals. They are the most problematic, um, use that you can have. Um, and so I feel like we need that, at the very least, need that to be part of the ordinance.
Y- yeah, essentially, so, you know, I talked to, um, uh, our city attorney today, a little bit about it, it's, it would essentially be similar to something like, um, along a lot of lines of how we re- regulate short-term rentals, we, we know it's an issue, we know it's essential for our community to have some, the question is how much is appropriate for us. And so what we will do is basically try and, um, prepare an ordinance where we can put in a number as, as, right now, I think there's only there are two or three current oper- currently operating within the city limits, and so.
There are two, there are only two.
Okay, I couldn't remember, yeah, I couldn't remember if one of them was temporary or if it was permanent, so two. So we are not, we're not overrun right now, but I, it is something that became an issue, and we can regulate through our own business licensing. You know, because we can choose what to license and not license within the city limits if it affects health, safety, and welfare, so. Just keying some things up that are coming down the pipeline on that.
I've got one quick question, so the two licenses that we have in the city, are they for guiding only?
Well, that, that, that's part of what we need to define. I think it's important, I, 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 if I remember correctly, the moratorium also referred to rentals or leasing. And, uh, it's my opinion, and I'm an O H B person, that that, that can be a serious problem uh, to just, uh, unleash people on the east side, uh, just because they can pay you to rent a vehicle.
Nice.
Uh, yes, please.
Does that moratorium, like, it's our, it's, it's our traffic code that limp, that says, like, for instance, your dirt bike must be street legal to drive around town, but.
It doesn't say that. I told you, it's not said that.
Is it state law, then? Cause I remember at the O H B meeting, like, Sheriff Speckman was saying, and I know this is true, like, you can't, like, you can't drive a side-by-side around town for your own personal business.
Like going to Safeway, but I think they're worried about that, yes.
They're worried about that, but is there, if that, if that's not possible to do, and you cannot make a side-by-side street legal, same way you can make a dirt bike street legal.
Right.
Does that more, or does that eventual ordinance have to say anything about allowing guided access to, like, wherever they go, because they have to drive along city streets to get there?
Yeah, but they're doing point A to point B, which is what the, what the regulation says for both the city and the county.
So there's nothing that's gonna be.
No, they can't take the whole route to Safeway.
Yeah.
Or the silver dollar.
Yeah.
But they could go f- from their point of origin up to.
To wherever their destination is up there, okay, thank you.
Okay, great, so just letting you know a few things that are on their way, um. Couple other things, uh, that I wanted to flag for, uh, our upcoming meeting on January ninth, we indicated that we wanted to be mostly ceremonial with swearing in of our mayor and city council, new city council members, as well as appointments for clerk and treasurer. Our city attorney reminded me that we actually, at our very first meeting of the year, we always need to determine the location for posting of our public meetings. It's requirement under the Colorado Meetings Act, so there will at least be one item of business we will need to be doing on January ninth, so. Just a little bit of a head of, heads up on that. And, uh, I think there are some other things that are coming down the pipeline, but what you'll maybe should expect on the agenda for the sixteenth is a supplemental budget for twenty twenty-three. Uh, and a review of our fee, our fee schedule, so that's something that I indicated I'd like to do every year, we may not make substantial changes. But given our, um, eventful summer of events, I think it's worth, worth looking at if our, uh, fee schedule is tracking for some of the bigger events that we have in town, so. Uh, those are just a few of things that are, uh, coming up, and let me just check my notes here. Uh. Last thing, I know we've been talking about this for a long time, uh, I, we have a contract now with a website contractor to update and our website. We're gonna go with Civic Plus, who, uh, our staff indicated was the most easy to use, they specialize in, um, creating municipal websites and, or local government websites. They also do our muni code updates, and they, uh, also, McKelly just used them to update their website. So that's, uh, that's the end of the year for you.
Will they do a better job on our website?
Well, I, I would have to say the bar is low, so I swing, you know, I, I have to say. He- here's the thing on our website, I wanna give credit to our staff, because there is no person on our staff who is a website guru and who has that as their primary job duties. We have been covering this, and people have been learning how to do it as, uh, ad hoc, and so our website is, it needs.
No, no, I, our website, and I do mean this not against the staff at all, our website has been reasonably fantastic and definitely improved from prior years. I mean, a better transition than what the county experienced.
Oh, well, uh, yeah, I think they also changed their email addresses along, along with it, so I think that, um, we will, we will, we will learn from past mistakes from other folks, so, yeah.
Thank you. Lori, is there anything new on the community center with respect to the repair of the boiler, or what the C U students are doing?
Yeah, so a couple exciting things, uh, we're, I'm holding off until the end, well, the start of the new year to work on some things, but we've got a couple of folks who are interested in, um, really kind of leading a team of people, I, I mean, I, I will admit that I am in over my head with the amount of work that I have, and so when I had a couple of people come to me and offer their assistance, um, I talked to the mayor about it, and we're looking at putting, we've put aside a little bit of money, money in twenty twenty-four budget to get some help, like, point, someone as a point person to help lead this effort, and then, as you can see, in the budget was the money for the sixty thousand dollars for the boiler repair, but that's in twenty twenty-four money, so. Uh, all of that to say, it has been on a little bit of a pause while I try and finish up some things for this year, but we're teeing up for next year.
There? Any other questions for the city administrator? Thank you, Lori. Uh, next up, we have police department, I don't see anybody here from the police department, but, uh.
Yeah, Acting Chief Prior indicated that he is, um, actually on vacation with his wife. Uh, but he has been doing a fantastic job of stepping up and, uh, helping us with, uh, you know, some of the, the end-of-year spending, um, ideas or budget for twenty twenty-four, and has really been a fantastic partner, um, in the police department. The mayor and I have had several meetings with the police department, and just wanted to report that their morale is, uh, excellent, and they are working fantastically as a team. And, uh, so, uh, from their perspective, things are good, if you have any questions, I'm happy to pass them along to the department.
It has looked good, and I've talked with them as well, and, and they're very, um, they're enthusiastic. You know, and they seem to be doing fine, they did say, we're looking forward to getting to ten-hour shifts. But they're, they're working twelve-hour shifts now, got full coverage, so, uh, they're doing a great job for us. For those of you who were at the, uh, at the party, you know, we gave, uh, um, awards to, uh, John Ottega and Dan Hanson. Um, was, uh, those, those guys have, have hung in for a long time under some difficult situations. And I appreciate what they've done very much. Any questions about the police department, I'm sorry.
Oh, I would just say, uh, there, I, I did forget one thing in my report, so whenever.
Go ahead.
Oh, great, great, I, you know, just in, in, uh, getting, getting things done and getting some help and assistance at city hall, I just uh, wanted to let you all know, we, uh, have fantastic new hire for our human resources director, uh, Paige Vigil, who, um, currently works at the county, is going to join us, uh, January second. She, um, is a fantastic, uh, person to fill this position, she, human resources is what she wants to do, so she is currently studying for her masters in human resources. And, um, will be getting her certificate, her certification in human resources come February. And it's just really, uh, a, a ball of fire, and really, I think is gonna be a great addition to the team, and she will wanted to finish a few things up before she left the county, and also wanted to take a little uh, time with her family over the holidays, but she'll be joining us, uh, January second, and I'm really hoping with her in place, we can continue to, you know, uh, improve our processes and, uh, work on, uh, you know, a lot of things that we need to do for our employees.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have the fire department. Uh, there's a couple of things in the fire department that I would like to point out that are, I think are very interesting, one of them is on, on the first page, and they talk about creating a peer support program. And I wasn't quite clear on what that was, but, uh, in their, uh, line of work, uh, there's a lot of trauma. You know, PTSD, whatever, however you want to, to frame it. And what they found is, you can go to a counselor, and that counselor can, can talk to you, but not as a peer. So this peer support group would be somebody who would reach out to you after an event. And, uh, just something they're getting started, it's, uh, I think it, it really is very interesting, um, that, that there's that strong a feeling in the fire service that they need that, so.
Stress injuries, the new thing.
Stress injury, okay.
Is there something similar for the police department?
Uh, they do not, not that I know of, no one's brought that to us, we do have in place, um, a program, uh, for mental health counseling, uh, for anybody in the city. Which includes, we really put it in place originally because of the police department, uh, but it's available to all departments. And then, uh, this evening, we'll be, uh, dealing by resolution with their heart, cancer, behavioral health plan also. Also. The fire department's been going great guns. They uh, they have their, the graduation, actually across the street at the old church. Um for the fire academy. And uh then they, they had about six of those young men here testing to be part of the, of their resident reserve program. So um they're, they're really doing a great job. Uh we have street department? Oh, hey, Dan.
Mayor, I, I appreciate you doing the report.
Yeah, I was wondering if you're gonna let Dan talk or if this was a new tactic to shorten the department report.
Right.
What do you have to say to us?
Well, I really appreciate you bringing up that peer support program, uh mayor, because it is very important for all of us uh. Uh and the staff to be able to have that outlet and, and we do have uh personnel also that, that take advantage of the uh triad. That the city um provides us as well, so that, that's a huge benefit for us. Uh and, and thank you, Lori, for mentioning Chief Boyle. I'm very proud of his efforts that he does for our community and everything that he. Uh puts his hands, hands on in the prevention world and uh just outreach to our community and the code and just. He is just such a wonderful individual and that, that award was well, well received for him. Um. And we did have fifteen graduates. Uh that was a great academy, uh mayor, and we did have nine applicants and we are down to six. Uh Station Two, just a quick update on that, we had, we currently have had four agencies that have utilized the classroom. A couple of meetings and also some training courses down there, so I, I think that when it is finalized, we have some electrical. Um uh outlets, et cetera, to still um get installed in that, in that uh. Um classroom portion, but we'll be able to hopefully open up more and more to have um greater agencies utilizing that. Uh search and rescue moved in a boat and two trailers with uh UTVs, so they've moved in. Public Works, I'm working with them to put some rubber matting on the floor in their base space. Uh and that'll protect it from the chains when they go in and out with their, with their road grader. And uh we still need to do the uh plum event, that's the exhaust removal system, the final on that, and I have that tomorrow with the electrician. And uh the company itself and CMC's in uh storing their, their type one engine up and down to Station Two for the winter. We also, CMC just installed a new compressor up at the college, which is great because now we have. Uh dual capacity, if you will, if, if for whatever reason our, our compressor goes out in Station One to fill our air bottles. Now we can utilize that and we don't have to worry as much now that we're getting, we're gonna relinquish that uh, that air and light vehicle back to the south central region. So we have um backup uh if, if ours were to go down for whatever reason. The, the type one Spartan is back, it's down at Station Two, so now we're gonna start getting that in service, but you won't see that. Go fully in service until the weather gets a little bit better. We want, we want to be able to do some training on that. So and, and you'll hear me again, uh and the mayor did bring it up, we'll talk about the heart cancer behavioral health and how that. Um kind of folds into the peer support and what things are paid for and some of the other benefits um from that when we get to that resolution tonight. So other than that, uh I don't have anything unless I, if there's any questions. Thank you.
I have a question, chief. Uh you were having uh some problems with the heat uh in, in uh, it's Station Two. Has that been resolved?
It has.
Oh, good, good. Thank you. Any other questions for the fire department? All right. Next up, street department.
Well, let me just real quick, what do you mean, uh everybody's having the holidays. Um we've been working on, we do the streets with all these snowfalls and heavy snow that we have back. Short three operators, so we've been working real hard to get those uh streets cleaned. Uh between cleaning, polishing and just general polishing and stuff, we've already worked and got most of the west side already done. Uh there's an average mean work from forty five to fifty four loads a day in the, in the trucks. So the guys are really working, working their hearts out on the attempt to get the streets cleaned. Uh we've had to go back quite a few times because we need a little bit more education to the public about moving cars. And then our equipment is big enough and we can't get between cars, so we've had a lot of calls and had to go back. So that's why it's been a little bit slower in getting some of those streets done. But today, the guys got four streets done. People moving their cars, they saw us working, so they wanna move all the cars. So we've got quite a bit done. One hundred block and Seventh Street got done today.
Thank you.
Yeah, we stayed a little bit longer to get down there, you mean, a big problem. So we're working on those, we're working all, all the way around and east side hasn't been out bad, it's a little easier places to hide the snow up there. Until we can get to it and it is on the west side. So we're working on the around, we'll get up to, up to that. Uh tomorrow, I hope we get at least another three streets done, which we finish off the west side and we'll start on the east side and we'll get back across. Uh we've been having a lot of equipment, having to do the maintenance and as much as we're using them. That's a lot of hours if the guys need to put in the seats and cleaning up things and just regular maintenance. So that's been pretty much our role for the last month or so. Doing everything we can and try to get it done as quickly as possible.
Any questions for the street department?
Uh yeah, just one thing. Uh the other night I was driving by um Alder Street. And I noticed on the intersection of Fifth and Alder, there's a stop sign that's completely on the wall.
I just, I saw that.
Yeah.
We get a lot of uh. Homeowners that use their own files and we're curious when we back into that.
Yeah.
Um tomorrow, I'll try and get over there while the guys are working and see if I can straighten that out. At least get it standing up until we can.
Yeah.
Do something.
I almost missed and I noticed there was one on the other side, I was like, oh, this one must be the one. Uh so thanks.
Yeah.
How, how do, I'm sorry, we're gonna. How do homeowners know when to move their cars?
A lot of it is when they start hearing this and seeing this, and it's, that's the best time to do it. And we understand that a lot of people work and doing it, we'll clean up as best as we can throughout the day. We're not too far away when we come back and do it. And down on the west side, it was unbelievable. Down the street, Second Street, we run back like two, almost three days in a row to try and get a different spot in the year. So I keep an eye on that, so I was trying to get the guys to go back in the field when we get a chance.
Aren't you also signing the day before or you're just not doing that this year?
Well, we haven't been signing because then I'll, then we gotta get the grader out, we're gonna be coming out earlier or so. If we can get in there with the U blades, we can get all those sidewalks and those skids cleaned up a little bit better. But on the uh east side here, we're gonna have to do that because Ninth Street, Eighth Street and Seventh Street, we're gonna have to sign off the first. One hundred, two hundred blocks because of the ice field.
Yeah, I saw it though, East Seventh.
It's a shame.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll get those signed and do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hey, did, did people ever get their uh snow brochures? I never got one.
I did.
Okay, I was excluded. I just wanna make, oh, really?
You know, South Hills is probably way out of the host workers way.
Anyway, yeah, I'm glad they went out, but I, I wasn't sure. Yes, so I, I was getting my ass chewed on, on, on Ledville bitchin' moan by some woman who lives in the county.
Oh my gosh.
Oh, thank you for answering that email on Saturday. I saw that one.
Right, so then she also sent me an email and so I answered her, yeah, and then she wrote me back, said, yes, I am in the city, here's my address. I said, you're not even close. So, yeah, it was fun.
Yeah, I had a phone call from the lady and she wanted to know about the city sidewalk budget. When, when are we gonna be trimming the lawn to do the sidewalk?
Oh.
Well, I asked her.
Well, when will that be?
Well, I got more than an answer to that, so they'll give me a better idea.
Our crazy city boundaries.
It's okay, a lot of people don't understand they're not on city limits. They do have ledville addresses, they live a mile from downtown, you know. We need to annex Lake County. What do you think? That would be a hard no.
That will not be part of my project.
Was that what happened there?
What's that?
I said, did something let the mayor have the eggnog? Is that what, what's happening?
Not yet, but we're working on it.
Really refusing to be a lame fuck man.
Oh, well. Uh lame, yes. Okay. Thank you very much. Uh next up, we have the animal shelter.
Okay, and I um, I got a text message from our animal shelter manager. Unfortunately, she had to uh run to the hospital, so. He has uh said if there's any questions on her report. That uh she is available by text message, but does not have a verbal report at the moment for.
Let's see, Brendan is here to report in her stead.
Gotcha, okay, wonderful. I wasn't sure because I can't really see the rest of the room.
Um hi everyone, I'm Brenda Cravell, the office administrator for the animal shelter. Um I have Caitlin on the line, I have her on speakerphone, but she apologized that she had um some of the. Actually go help her boyfriend last year in the hospital because of a fight, a dog bite and. Uh so our report is pretty brief. As of today, we have, our animal count is up to two hundred ninety four. Um we had low numbers due to that we were full capacity. And so as you see here on the report, it says surrenders in the city we have two. Um transfers, adoptions, adoption returns and impounds. Transfer ins and adoption return for zero, city and county. Uh impounds for city for five, county seven, on the same street is one. Bike quarantine is one still, holds one in city and one in county. Uh repeat offenders, we have one in the city and two in the county. Uh dogs that need rabies were two in the city and five in the county. And the dogs that need licenses were three in the city and six in the county. And the outcomes were returned to owners, eleven, combined nine adoptions and transfers out with ten. And puppies, I hit an Asia with one dog for a cruelty case that we had. Um that dog was seen at a vet in Summit County, multiple issues with him. Even surgery was gonna be very complicated and the vet recommended he be discharged. Um so to the date that we have on December fourth. Uh through our orders, we have uh two thousand twenty two annual numbers, so one hundred ninety five. We've seen how they increased from two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty two, but um also we have annexed more into our cities, so we'll go back to that. We have current events, holiday fundraiser, which are court ornaments and pet portraits. And so those are, those are fun. We have listed them out and I'm hoping to get good response to get from um.
Where do you do those?
At the shelter, we have the ornaments, the pet portraits. Um Caitlin is taking care of that. Um usually it's. Um I think she does it, correct me if I'm wrong Caitlin, have you done it with like somebody does them for you and then. Um gives them to the owner? I don't know if she has the service because she's at the hospital, but.
Um it's like something we shared out with you earlier where the staff, the community members. The picture of the staff drawn out and the community member can then gift it to a person and it'd be cheapless.
They'll turn out really good. I've seen some of them. Um so we have four county holds and one city hold. We have.
What are the four county holds?
The four county holds were because of the county case with the sheriff's department. Four dogs were in our facility due to the fire on East Thirteen. And so that has regarding those four animals. Um we have two of those surrendered today. And the other two were returned to owners. And the city. Uh yeah, so the city holds here, that is the bike quarantine. Um so tomorrow we have court, uh the order has uh court tomorrow, hopefully we can get that settled in, but. We're not sure. We do have a waitlist for surrenders because we don't have full capacity. Yeah, that's pretty much it.
Any questions for the animal shelter? Yeah, first you go ahead.
Um that cruelty case, did you go with the owner, what, and what are they assigned to? We did, yes. The um deputy did site for the leopard's bull yet. I'm not sure exactly where it went. We didn't see the summon, they weren't issued.
Yeah, there's a January court date for the county.
He had more dogs, so he did surrender those cats.
And then you mentioned, did I? Linda, can you clarify about the transfer program?
For the puppies?
Um no, I just wanted to clarify whether the transfers came in that um. That can be discussed in, you know, budget meeting with transfers that. Would really carry animal shelter as a whole transferred in animals due to higher management? It wasn't something that I started as an initiative myself. I just was more transparent. With getting feedback and information from the public.
So I was, prior to the P D, I was with the animal shelter uh the year before that. And ever since I, I was involved with the animal shelter, they have, they have had transfers into the animal shelter from out of state now counties. So Caitlin's not the one bringing the transfers into, she, she hasn't brought this program, it hasn't really, it, it's been. Maybe like three or four years prior to Caitlin that it's existed. It's just gotten much better.
Okay. Any questions for the animal shelter?
Thanks.
Okay, next up, uh Deputy City Clerk's um report, she's not here. I did find it interesting that, that Roots RX, or you know, the new owner was able to fix their problem with the licensing and they're, they've, they've been able to reopen.
Um just to update, uh business license renewals have gone out and uh folks in town should be receiving those shortly. And, and based upon feedback from last year, uh Deputy City Clerk did two things. One, got the renewals out earlier because last year we had some. Uh folks who felt like it got kind of lost in the shuffle of the holidays, so we got the, we um picked up the business license rules out earlier. And also gave a little additional time um in January to get the renewals in. So that it doesn't get lost in the holiday shuffle.
There, there seems to be a steady stream of people coming in.
Okay, good. Next up, we have the uh, the building permit for McCounty.
This is Mary, you'll see the tipper this time of year, people are not submitting building permits for things waiting in construction because they wanna pull those permits in the spring. So they can use the full extent of the, the permit period.
Does it get two years? Any questions about the building permit reports? Okay, next up, we have the planning department.
All right, good evening. So in terms of um pre-application projects, there are just some discussions you may want to have one to. Update the council on is I've been having some preliminary discussions with the property owner. Uh who is basically uh one property removed uh east of um of the Family Dollar. On one of the uh vacant lot there, that's uh in our two zoning district. They want to voluntarily construct six uh de-restricted housing. They received a, a technical assistance grant from Chapel for small and full housing. Um problem is that our zoning doesn't, the density limitations don't allow the number of units. Um so I'm working with the developer to try to find a pathway um to bring that. Um basically from city council or the Google I R T development agreement. Um there's a talks of a variance, although variance process is limited and you can't require a commitment to affordable housing as part of the variance process. Uh so just wanna keep that on the radar that we have a volume, um you know, a property. Uh, so just want to keep that on the radar that we have a, a volunteer, um, you know, property owner voluntarily proposing de-restricted, um, indoor housing. That was great. Our code just doesn't allow that when you're doing something that's small or the same.
What you may not know is years ago, we, uh, approved a permit for fourplex on that same property.
Right, and then it, they renewed it and then expired. Uh, and then there really wasn't like a density discussion for that, and that was for fourplex, and I actually wanted to chart a sixplex, so.
Right.
Um, so stay tuned, I'll, I'll bring more information, but I'm, you know, being as supportive as possible of this application, trying to, trying to find a pathway for.
Is it the same property owner who?
No.
Uh, in terms of active applications, of course, we have the rezoning proposal tonight, so we'll, we'll discuss that later. Uh, I've received a building permit application from the Radars developer for a twenty-eight unit condominium building, uh, that's contemplated in the P U V. Um, so I have, I've reviewed their application and I've sent them comments back. I haven't approved any building permit applications in the railyards since I've, since I've been here. Uh, our, of course, our regulations are, are, um, building C O's right now based on the phasing plan, uh, but not, not building permits. So that's, that's an update. Um, they, they, the original submitter did not comply, and so I sent them back comments. Uh, moving, uh, keeping on with the railyards, in terms of the storm sewer issues, we discussed a lot this year in that, uh, hundred thousand dollar agreement. Uh, their deadline was December ninth to both complete all the, the physical corrections, the storm sewer, and to provide all the documentation. Uh, they did, uh, not provide the documentation. They're, um, ten days past that deadline. Uh, they're telling me they're going to submit it, but I haven't received anything, so I'm working with the city attorney on our enforcement options. But that hundred thousand dollars, uh, is essentially the city's if we were to decide to, to draw on that. It's just a matter of whether or not we want to. Um, um, essentially trust the developer will submit all these things they're saying to, or we develop a plan to, uh, do all that engineering work ourselves, like a hundred thousand dollars will be out. Um, so more, more to come on that, but that's the update, uh, primarily with the railyards. Uh, in terms of, um, just general construction activity, I, in your, uh, update memo, I, I did mention that we currently have ten, uh, ten or eleven, um, illegal construction complaints. You know, we operate under complaint-based enforcement, uh, uh, that made some great progress with the case of perfect community service officers. And we've developed, uh, especially enforcement program, the ticket books, et cetera. Uh, and the, the C S O's have been, uh, very helpful. And, uh, so we've been conducting enforcement over the past few weeks, and we've, we've received, we've received a lot in the past month or two, uh, for various things. And we're, we're, we are responding to those and we have, we have a system established for that. And so it's, I'm happy to update that in terms of our, our response to illegal construction. But, um, I wanted to mention that the Leavenhill Lake County Regional Housing Authority has a development subcommittee who, uh, basically made recommendations to the, um, to the, um, will be making recommendations to the board regarding the, um, the, um, fund that we use for the twenty twenty-four housing needs assessment update. Uh, and we did recommend roots policy research, um, so that recommendation will go in front of the, uh, regional housing authority, um, at the next meeting, and that is being paid for by the, by the county, the O C C. Did submit a letter to the, um, to the Herald, updating the Herald on the zoning code amendments that were passed by city council in twenty twenty-three. So the public, uh, will be informed of that and, uh, it will be, um, published tomorrow. Uh, so that was primarily the historic district amendments and the table of uses and definitions updated, the council, um, passed in August, in July. Uh, I want to celebrate the, uh, fact that the historic preservation commission, um, has received a lot of grant money, uh, who have been awarded a lot of grant, um, money recently. Uh, I think, uh, a few months ago, I did update the council on all the, the grants that the historic preservation commission has been working to obtain. Uh, I just wanted to update that they received a ten thousand dollar grant just recently from Climax. Um, and then this is huge news, they received a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar grant from the state historical fund. And this is all for the survey work, um, that the, the historic preservation commission is, um, has hired consultants, uh, or has hired consultants to complete. Laurie's passed out a map, uh, which basically shows the, um, I'm sorry, I can't throw this on its screen, it's in suspense, I apologize. But we said it's probably, but, but basically shows in orange the areas that this grant will, um, will fund survey work for. And then you can see the, um, the darker, uh, orange boundary that's larger, that's our historic district boundary. So, um, you know, this is great progress. There's still more work to do in terms of understanding what, what are the structures in our historic district and having individual surveys for individual buildings. Uh, but this is, uh, fantastic work on behalf of the historic preservation commission in terms of chasing down money. Um, these volunteers on the commission do not just show up, like just for the meetings twice a month and sit there for an hour. They work after the meetings, they do homework and they get stuff done. And, uh, we, we're really fortunate, um, to have those commissioners and we're really fortunate to receive, uh, this grant. The H P C also, uh, received, uh, um, approximately nine hundred dollar scholarship to attend the saving places conference, which is the main historic preservation, uh, conference held in state. Um, so that will fund seven attendees, five in person, uh, two, I'm sorry, five online, two in person. Uh, and, um, and I believe one of our council members will also be attending, uh, um, that, that conference. Uh, so it's just, again, it's nice to have this continuing support from the state for the historic preservation.
It's a, it's a great office.
That's what I've heard.
Yeah.
I, I should mention that the, you know, the survey work for kind of the orange polygon, it's kind of the uppermost left-hand, uh, corner of that map, which is the eighth and ninth street area, that, um, has been, uh, that is underway. We have a consultant who's actively working on that. So this grant funding will kind of fund those other three, you know, bright armed columns.
And if I could just clarify the, the rectangle on Harrison, that is a survey that has already been done.
Okay.
So I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, that's the only area.
That's the only area that's complete.
Harrison Avenue is the only area that has been already been surveyed. Uh, that's it for planning, thank you.
Uh, you have a note here about, uh, Gateway. And you had put in some comments, and you and I talked about in the comments, maybe, uh, suggest you to bus stop. Do you remember if that was part of your comments or not?
Yeah, the, uh, I guess the design team has, has proposed, um, a way to use there to allow for a bus stop.
Okay.
Um, I don't recall that, but like, they, they got that far in our proposal, but we were certainly saying, and they, I think they're certainly contemplating.
I just wondered, was he thinking about it? Yeah.
Because that, that project, you know, in the county, um, they're, they're not proposing any kind of pedestrian infrastructure to connect that parcel with four hundred units anywhere into, you know, the northern county limits, you know, by city market, uh, no, you know, no sidewalks or anything proposed. So, um, other than driving, you know, um, any occupants will be dependent upon transit along the arm of the shoulder. If this with the current proposal.
Okay, thank you.
I think, I think we'll see, I think we'll see some refinement for that.
All right, any questions for the planner, please?
Um, a twenty-eight unit, how about, is that located where initially intended for the apartment, don't they?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, essentially, the, um, the P U D allows multifamily. And multifamily in terms of ownership can be apartments, all owner ownership, or it can be condominiums. But, but the land use regulations and places don't specify which year. And the developers essentially, uh, stated, you know, off record that they, they tend to sell those units instead of, of, um, having it on a long ownership.
Any other questions for planner? Okay, thank you. Uh, next up, we have financials.
Uh, good evening, because you all been, well, I seem to have knew you had a party the other night. Um, so I spent the first week of December in Ramo Wechat at Casell, um, their training facility. Um, the headquarters, to get some end-up training on the system. Um, I told them that I wanted to, to really get in there. I know all the basics I've done to in this business for many years. Um, so some things that, uh, are free to us and we never utilized, um, that I think are very exciting, um, is Casell Connect Online. Um, it has never been set up. Um, this will allow department heads as well as council, um, the opportunity to log into Casell online and be able to see, um, expenditures, revenues to budget in real time. So you don't have to wait, um, you know, if you're curious on, on any line, you will not have to wait. Um, so they are working on setting up that URL now. Um, and so that's something that we're gonna, you know, push out hopefully within the next, uh, couple of months. Um, there's also an online budgeting tool, so department heads will be able to, uh, input their, their budgets. Um, and then it'll go through a approval process. We can put as many approvers in place as we, as we want so that it rolls up when the budget is approved. Um, we can then roll it into the finances and not have to do that manual, uh, entry. Um, timekeeping is another portal that, or, uh, module that we've been paying for, uh, since inception. Um, and it's never been denozed. Um, so we're working on setting up the timekeeping for the departments. Um, we'll start rolling that out, um, in phases by department. Um, right now departments fill out, turn in paper time sheets. And then I have to manually, um, calculate on the paper and then it goes into a spreadsheet and then it goes in the system. So, um, it'll be a clock-in, clock-out as well as have the ability to set approvers so an employee can clock in their time. They'll, when it, when they send it for approval, they'll go to their, uh, supervisor, direct supervisor, um, to review. And they approve, and then we can put in as many steps for approvers, um, with financing, like the final overlook to make sure, you know, that the paperwork basically looks correct. Um, that should, right now it takes about three days to complete, you know, um, even so manual. Um, so with that streamlined thought process, um, importing files, it's not something that's been done, so it's something I've been working on, um, and utilizing a lot since I've been back as well as reporting. Journal entries, um, I can import invoices from Excel. Um, it's saving me hours right now, so I'm, I'm hoping to get more efficient, um, with, with my time and provide better information to, um, you know, to, to you all as well as, as our citizens. Um, and not sort of the night foil hour, whatever you want to call it. Um, let's see. I'm going to continue just looking for those efficiencies within the system, uh, as well as, uh, you know, importing cash. We have a short-term rental right now, each piece, every one of those individual units is entered annually. So it's, it's, it's streaming to bank receiving. Um, we haven't had a chance to finalize the third quarter short-term rental payments yet. Uh, that is our line pass to do tomorrow so that I can get the hourly share up to them. Um, I'm still training with Darna, um, basically, just on an ASME, we've been training for a month or so on Saturday. Uh, but if there's something that I feel like, either we haven't touched on yet because she, she's been busy, um, or a client struggle, you know, with something, but for the most part, um, it's as needed, uh, because a few others have there. Um, for our financial highlights, for the month of November, um, our general fund revenue was four hundred eighty-eight thousand and ninety-seven. Um, it does, I, I did put on my report that it does not include, if you look at the financial statements, it does not include, um, entries for September, including, uh, sales tax payment. I have all the receipts, they were deposits, um, in the interim when, when we didn't have somebody in the year, well, type, uh, deposits were. They're in the bank, they're just not in the system. So that's also, you know, working through those stacks of items, um, just so I wanted you to let you know that it's not reflected there. It is reflected in the sales tax report. Um, the reconciliations were completed through April. I have a process, but I haven't had a chance to clean that yet. Um, I know we'll continue to, um, work on those. Uh, one of the things that, uh, while I was at Casell is, um, they showed me how I can import the third checks, so you have to go in and check each little lots, which is very time-consuming. So any of those, I should see them and just keep looking for. Um, general funding expenditures for November was two hundred eighty-three thousand and seventy-six. Um, and I was able to get everything entered through November, um, mostly because I know it's the import function, um, and saving hours and trying to get all of that in. Um, sales tax revenue, um, this was received in November, not recorded from the county. Just so there's, to clarify that the variance there was more than sixty-six thousand and forty-eight dollars. Um, I'm still working through accommodations and I hope to have that wrapped up by the end of this week, so I can get that out of my plate. Um, see, uh, prior upcoming items, I'll be working on a seven-month budget, um, with the mayor. Um, and just continuing to work with the cell. I have reached out to them, um, for some pricing on document management, where we will be able to actually attach, uh, invoices to vendor payments, um, items to, uh, employee files, um, and try to cut down on the amount of paper that, you know, is passed around as well. Um, that's easy. You'll be able to see it if you log in on, um, Casell Online. Um, and, and you will be able to drill down that far so you can see, you know, all those tiny details. Um, let's see, uh, I'm going to be working on a, updating a purchase day, the purchasing card policy or credit card policy. Um, and move away from shared electronic cards. Um, they will, I think, will be some of the tracking down receipts and, and, and whatnot. Um, and then I've been able to, um, the system, the credit card system actually has an export function. Um, and I will be able to set up users, cardholders with access to go in and they will be able to import, upload their receipts, prove their, um, their charges, but their descriptors exported and then they can report it. Um, and we have been able to manage that one entry, um, it's, it's very time-consuming, there's, I think there's other things that could be focused on with, uh, you know, cash analysis and. So, um, any of those little efficiency will help with that. Um, I'm going to clean the whole thing else is, is my report. Delta, you have any questions on my report?
I, I do, I do. We can see that, for instance, in our county for the, the fire department, county's six months behind. How is our billing to the county bill?
I have billed, uh, the county and I dropped all those invoices off to the county. Um, I think it was the week before Thanksgiving.
Gotcha.
Um, through October.
Okay.
Um, at that time I didn't have November, now that I have February. Fire, animal shelter, um, as well as funding that is still to finalize the twenty twenty-two. Um, because there's always a catch-up. I remember seeing them come through, you know, if there was an overage or, 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 so. Uh, she, she didn't mention, I haven't analyzed that yet for twenty-two. Um, the, there, there might be a credit back to the county, but I haven't had a chance to look into that yet to see if they're registering a credit, um, to the county.
Thank you. Any other questions about the financials?
No, I'm just super excited about these efficiencies.
You and me both.
It's fantastic.
Um, the sales tax comparison I had sent out, I did update, uh, the No- November with the, that is the actual check that we received in November from the county. Um, so with that, uh, that brings us to just over budget. Um, by twenty-nine thousand dollars. Um, I did some quick, uh, quick math to include down December, but what was sent over by the bank finance office. Um, the number she sends and then the number that we, or the check that we actually get, there's always a slight variance because there is another check that we received from the treasurer, so they'll know that exact dollar amount. Um, but it'll be close. So she had sent over for December, two hundred and sixty-four thousand, six, sixty-four. Um, so that would bring, uh, to roughly three hundred thousand more than we've budgeted. So that would bring to roughly three hundred thousand more than we had budgeted for. So I think we're sitting pretty good for sales tax.
Any questions? Okay, next up, we have bills. Ready to take a minute to review? Crystal, I thought that was very interesting, the check that was in the pile of checks for accommodations tax. You know, that they had lost, that check for two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Oh, I know, it is never, it's not for the bank, it has never shown up.
That's bizarre.
We had another one on that same date that, that never showed up too.
How interesting. Did those go through positive pay or is that not a factor?
No, they were, well, they were kept here, but I'm sure.
Well, some bills, you know, that, that. I think are not common, then we have to okay them through positive pay, through a community bank. Got you.
No, they're, they are not. And we notified, or we're notified.
All right.
But it was that October twenty day, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Something that caught my eye is under the Conservation Trust Fund. Paula Martinez, part factor, claiming in the amount of three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. It's under the animal shelter conservation trust fund.
Yeah, I think that part, two hundred dollars. Yeah, yeah. For me, that was four thousand.
For, for a month?
Yeah, that was part, sure, we heard of the number through the last.
Sounds like something we'll have to deal with quickly. To wipe out this, the conservation trust fund.
Yeah, the, the conservation trust fund, we can use that for because it's, it's a public amenity, but her. Yeah, what we have her doing is, and we need to look at whether or not this needs to be done throughout the winter. But, but she is unlocking the bathrooms in the morning and cleaning them. And then cleaning them at the midday, but also locking them up at the end of the day as well. And so with the addition of the parklet, the visitor center parklet. She's covering Zeit's Park and the parklet each twice a day. So we're going to have to figure out if that makes sense for us to continue doing, but of course, in the summer months. We have a lot of usage of those bathrooms and they do need attention twice a day.
For sure, and I certainly can understand that. It'd be interesting to know what that hourly is in October, November, December. Because I'm sure they do need attention, but that's a lot of money.
And, and I don't know, I mean, it's gonna be an internal conversation as well, but Orlando, the new maintenance man. Also is allocating and does for the parklet and sites as well, so I don't know.
That's ten percent of his allocation goes towards parks.
And I'm not sure what, what item is during that.
Yeah, Orlando, Orlando, right now, that cleaning wasn't part of his job duties. But the maintenance was, so we've had some issues of needing to repaint some of the walls due to some graffiti. Pair of a handle on one of the doors, things like that Orlando has been doing. And then we can bill his time on those public facilities to the Conservation Trust Fund as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions about those? In which case, I would entertain a motion, please.
We're at some moods if I have a bill.
You want my lead seconds?
Is there any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. All are in favor. Thank you, Crystal. At this time, it's just a hair after seven. We're going to take a quick break, and as soon as we're done with that break, we're going to have an award ceremony. How was your party? All right, we'll try and get you back there as soon as we can. Okay, you should come over. You don't have our names on our stockings.
There's no names on our stockings? Because it doesn't matter when I drop the coal in, doesn't matter which. We're all getting the same thing.
If there is coal in one, I know it's mine.
It's yours. Yes, and all the way at the end. Put in a letter and then you.
Yeah, I did.
Because I did put the letter in. And I think after everybody's sworn in, then you decided, I came back. Is that the way that worked?
You should put a letter in that. And city council could just go, this all has been, so it's a good point to make that choice, but I don't think we've processed it.
I did put a letter in.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I think they're going to have to process of solicitor. I don't know if they've done that. I don't know if we've done that. Oh, it is. Okay, then we have, what was, you're going with the, the date for application was?
Just named two, and there's like city treasurer and city for. I think that's right. I don't remember the date. I just remember seeing it. I'm going, yes.
We'll see what happens. We never let our. We let our family.
I couldn't see it through the. So I had to provide.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll.
Okay, everybody ready to roll it again? Not quite.
I have to answer this in a moment.
All right, let's go. Fine, you got to stop talking.
You wore your size twenty-four?
I've made a proclamation, which is one of those official things we do, but to be honest, this is the official version. But to me, this is personal, and I think you guys know that. What you have done for this community, I can't even lend to describe the quality. That you have brought our community over these years, it just stung me. It's so good. And what, what our children have, have been able to grow up through in these years. It's something really special, but it's something to give, it's the adults. And then, you know, just the, the Christmas. Pageant at the old church, a kind example of that, and how you involve the community. I'm going to read the proclamation. This is a proclamation of the City of Leadville, Colorado, celebrating the superlative service to our community by Scott Carroll and Celesta Terrence. Whereas Scott and Celesta have served our community as teachers and leaders. And whereas Scott and Celesta have engaged our community, not only as high school teachers, but as performers and directors as well. Whereas the citizens of Leadville have been unveiled by plays, opera, and Broadway performances. Whereas because of the extraordinary efforts of Scott and Celesta, the performances each year at the high school have achieved excellence beyond our wildest expectations. Certainly my wildest expectation. I was, I was in drama in high school, you know, I know how that can be. Whereas the lyric era of Leadville was established to bring performance-based culture to Leadville. Has worked closely with the Tabor Opera House and the old church. And whereas Scott and Celesta have been kind and generous in their service to our community. And whereas sometimes, if we are lucky, special people cross our paths and make a difference by their presence. Therefore, be resolved that I Greg Wabi, Mayor of the City of Leadville and the City Council of Leadville, Colorado. Do hear my complaint, December nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three, as a celebration of the exceptional years of service by Scott Carroll and Celesta Terrence. And to thank them both for all they have done for our community. And. If I cover these correctly, this is for Scott. And you're not wrapped though.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Can you show them?
Yes.
No, you have to show your face, Celesta.
I might point out, beautiful is that photograph this that Celesta's holding, but also is a photograph of Hope Pass.
Yes, yes.
Which is.
For someone who. Hope Pass is dear and dear.
I got a tattoo of Hope Pass this last summer, so thank, kudos to Amanda Gunn and Rose.
And here's a little story. Celesta, no shrinking violet, to be sure. This last summer, she was going to run the Silver Rush. Remember that?
I did run Silver.
She finished it with about an hour and a half to spare and had to change and get to the Tabor Opera House. To, to sing. So you run fifty miles and then you turn around and you swing, sing with the Broadway song.
Yeah.
Not bad.
Good night.
It was a good.
Thank you all so much. This is so lovely.
All right, back to your party.
They, oh my goodness, they do.
Okay, next up, we have a public hearing for eight twenty-one Harrison. This is a rezoning request.
Thank you for having me.
Since this is a public hearing, I will start and open this with the public hearing script. This is City of Leadville Public Hearing Procedure for eight twenty-one Harrison Avenue rezoning request. Good evening, my name is Greg Wabi and I am the mayor of the City of Leadville. This is a public hearing before city council to consider a rezoning application. And it is to amend the official zoning map of the City of Leadville to change the single lot located at eight twenty-one Harrison Avenue. Also known as Lot A Block Twelve, Leadville Improvement Company Subdivision. From the retail core district, so be the change from the retail core district to the transitional retail residential district. The applicant is Justin Lopez. When the public hearing is open, I will first attend to some preliminary housekeeping matters. I will then ask for staff to discuss highlights of the staff report, followed by the applicant to make a brief presentation of his or her case. Then testimony of any individuals in the audience who wish to speak in favor of the application. And then those individuals who wish to speak against the application. The applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal, which is the applicant's opportunity to respond to witty comments made by members of the public. After rebuttal, I will close the public input portion of the public hearing and allow city council members an opportunity to ask questions. Once the public input portion of the meeting is closed. We will not accept additional testimony unless it is in a response to questions posed by council members with the applicant. At the conclusion of our questioning, the city council will render a decision, which could include a continuation of the hearing. Which could include a continuation of the hearing. This public hearing is quasi-judicial. Which means that we have to follow certain procedural requirements to establish a record for this reason. It is important that when you speak, you identify yourself and state your physical address. If you would like to submit written materials, please understand that the city will have to hold on to those materials for at least thirty days. After city council renders its decision. Are there any questions about the public hearing procedure? Does anybody have any, anything to disclose in terms of quasi-judicial? conversations?
Expert.
Ex parte conversations?
No.
Okay, I hear none. Uh, in which case, I will now open the public hearing, and it is seven thirty-two. And this is for the eight twenty-one Harrison Avenue rezoning request applicant, Justin Lopez. Okay, we will start with the staff presentation. Staff would let give us an idea.
All right, good evening, for the record, Jake Mashon, planner two, oh, sorry, planning director. That's what happened, I was six month old. Um, and this is a public hearing for rezoning requests, as the mayor mentioned. Um, I just have a slideshow, just basically cover the brief highlights of the staff report. Uh, of course, in your packet, starting page seventy-five, you have your council memo of the city uh, planning commission staff report, uh, which covers everything in full detail in terms of the project compliance. Um, so there was a, um, full presentation and public hearing and planning zoning commission last week. Uh, as you're well aware, the planning zoning commission is kind of tasked on uh, working through all the details of the nitty gritty of applications and then providing you with a recommendation. Uh, just to be very straightforward, uh, with this application is, uh, planning zoning commission, uh, did not recommend approval to the council. Uh, and any staff that supported that, I just want to go through, uh, quickly, just, uh, really quickly, just exploit the roles, or everyone's very clear on this. This is staff job, and this is basically to get, um, this application through, um, through all the requirements and up to the public hearings. Um, the planning zoning commission is a recommending body, so they have, they have provided a recommendation to you. Uh, and your job tonight, um, fortunately, in holding a public hearing is to review our decision. Uh, so just to briefly summarize the application, uh, as, um, the mayor mentioned, this is a proposed rezoning from the retail core, uh, which is shown, uh, the upper elements of that is shown on the map on the bottom right-hand screen. Um, and the, both the property, the proposal rezoning, um, is kind of the uppermost, uh, limit of the retail core zoning shown here. Uh, it is a, the applicant and property owner is present, Justin Lopez. Uh, property is currently used for a barbershop within that RC zone, uh, that's a, that's an allowed use, by the way. So just a little bit of a background on property, um, this is a, this is a historic structure, uh, traditionally used as a single-family residence beginning in the late eighteen hundreds. Uh, the current zoning, you know, our zoning ordinance was originally established in the nineteen seventies, and it's been, you know, it's been revised time and time again. Uh, so as of today, the current zoning, the retail core district does not allow use of of single-family dwellings. Uh, there are, of course, three single-family dwellings, there are also historic homes that are to the south of this. Uh, those uses, um, uh, unlike this property, which is currently used for commercial use, those properties uh, are currently, uh, residential uses, they have, uh, continued residential uses, so essentially they are legal non-compliance, which means they're granted bothered into the current motion. I just wanted to put this table on the screen to compare the uses that are allowed, both existing and the proposed zoning district. So on the left, the RC zoning district versus the existing zoning district, you'll note that it's predominantly commercial uses. Uh, uh, dwelling use or residential use is allowed in mixed-use buildings, so if you have commercial use in the ground floor, you can have residential above or below, um, I don't think you can have it behind. In this case, the, in the TR, you know, the proposed zoning district, the TR district, uh, you'll know that, uh, there's significantly more allowance for residential use for dwelling use, uh, including single-family dwellings should be allowed in the proposed zoning district. Uh, and that would include short-term rental use, uh, we don't have a definition for long-term residential use, uh, that's just a single-family dwelling. Um, but but, uh, short-term rental use of a single-family dwelling, uh, would be allowing. So, uh, as I'll get into a little more, um, you know, we're, we're tasked with evaluating what, um, the, um, what type of uses are allowed in the zoning district. This is not an evaluation for a proposed change of use, this is, just a reminder, this is an evaluation for proposed rezoning. Um, and so, like, unlike a conditional use permit, which, which often come before you, there's a specific, specific use um, that is proposed, and we are charged with evaluating that, in this case, uh, the applicant has stated their proposed, uh, use, um, but we're not necessarily evaluating based on a specific proposed use, we're just looking at all the uses that would be allowed in the proposed zoning district. Um, and that's just one of, one of the things we're looking at. All right, so to summarize what's in your staff report, uh, these are the, the ten, uh, this is really the rubber strip, this, these are ten, um, criteria for approval on the left-hand side uh, for, uh, a, um, approval of a rezoning, and what's stated in your staff report is that, um, if you look at the intent section of the rezoning criteria, so it's, it's kind of that introductory statement that proceeds all of this, this criteria. It says that, that the purpose of the rezoning, uh, the, the purpose of the rezoning criteria is not to relieve any kind of explicit hardships for, for a particular property or for a specific property. Um, that, you know, there are other criteria, but it's not, uh, it's, it's not for that purpose. So as we go, we look through the code criteria, and again, this is evaluated much more. In summary, the zoning, uh, criteria, the staff and planning zoning commission are finding that, um, uh, half of the zoning criteria are met, but half are not. Um, I will, I will go into more detail on the first and third criteria, so health, safety, welfare, and comprehensive planning compliance. Um, but essentially, um, to quickly summarize that, in terms of health, safety, welfare, uh, what's outlined in your staff report is that, uh, it is important for, uh, the welfare of the community in terms of economic development, in terms of our tourism-based economy, to maintain the vibrancy of Harrison Avenue, uh, in terms of, you know, in terms of having, um, you know, shopping uses, storefronts, those sorts of things. Uh, all of those things and those types of uses, those commercial uses contribute to the character of areas of avenue, which contributes to economic development and and tourism, which is important for our community's development. Of course, health, safety, welfare is a very, is a very general statement, so we have to kind of break that down, so that, that's the way the staff and planning zoning commission have evaluated this. Um, in terms of, um, no significant adverse effects in the adjacent single-family, there's, there are adjacent single-family uses, so there's no um, compatibility with, with the adjacent uses to the south, uh, to the north or east, if a single-family use was to be allowed within, uh, the zoning district for a dwelling use. Uh, in terms of com- comprehensive planning compliance, I'll show some images on the screen, but essentially, the, the, the city's comprehensive plan uh, designates this area, um, essentially, everything on Harrison Avenue, one block off of Harrison Avenue, uh, not just the half block, with a full block, as, as a downtown area, so what the, and this describes the intense statement as having the, the commercial floor, um, the, the uses that, that are kind of define the downtown character of Harrison Avenue extend in, in the future and, uh, into the, the block on either side. So it's not, the, 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 the future land use map of the comprehensive plan is not a regulatory document, but it does guide the, your current zoning regulations in terms of if you have a proposed rezoning, or you're working on a zoning map and then uh, guide what, how these uses should transition in the future, what the community has decided how these uses should transition in the future. Um, so, so you can have, you know, for example, a single-family home, it doesn't comply with the zoning rules, which prohibits single-family zoning, and that's fine. If you should have a change, it has to come in compliance with the zoning. In terms of zoning, if you are, if there's a proposed change to the zoning, then you're supposed to use the comprehensive plan for guidance on, uh, what we want in the future, even though those current uses. The rezoning may not be, may not reflect the current use of the property. Uh, there's, there's not been significant, um, change in character, uh, in, in this neighborhood, and I think that, that some of these homes have been upgraded, but in terms of change, recent changes of use adjacent properties, I, I'm not finding there's a significant change in character in the immediate area. Um, finding that this application complies with, um, in terms of maintaining property values, I think, you know, rezoning to to a zone that would allow residential uses, as we've seen in Leadville, property values have only gone off, so no, no concern there. Um, again, uh, the surrounding land, land uses do, do include residential, so if it were to become residential use, um, within the zoning, there's not a concern with, uh, being in harmony. Uh, in terms of adequate infrastructure, this pretty much comes down to parking. Um, I, I think that there could be parking in the rear of this property if, if it were to convert to a dwelling use, both single-family or multifamily, there are options for park, onsite parking in the rear of the property, although like a single-family dwelling does not require on-street parking. Uh, in terms of increasing traffic, if it were to go from a commercial use to a residential use, which will allow in the zone, the new zoning, uh, I think it would just be okay. For purposes of this discussion, it could be a wash, commercial uses are usually more intense during the day. Residential uses are usually more intense in the evening, so in terms of parking, I think it would be minimal anyways, but I think it's a reasonable wash for these purposes. Um, uh, do not think that the zoning map is in error in any way, I think, um, the, the original intent of the retail, retail core zoning map designation was to go all the way to Ninth Street, um, which is just out our door here, uh, and I do not think there was any error in the original zoning map, um, the drawing of the original zoning map. And then lastly, um, and this is a little bit backwards, the, the, the comprehensive plan did identify a need for, um, residential. Um, in our, you know, in the future, we need additional residential, it was obviously talking about long-term residential uses. So in this case, uh, it's not like this, um, this change in the zoning is addressing something that was not identified uh, in the zoning, I'm sorry, in the comprehensive block, if that makes sense. Um, so that's, uh, a lot, I just tried to, tried to summarize that as quickly as possible, as I mentioned, I will, um, evaluate, um, criteria one and three in more detail here. Uh, so, we did look at, uh, some case studies for some other similar communities, so we looked at BV and Salida, uh, just, just for starters, for example, and looking at their zoning, uh, what kind of zoning they have for their main streets, for their commercial core, and what that zoning allows. And, uh, in summary, um, in, in Buena Vista, you know, they have a main street similar to Harrison Avenue, and, um, everything in red is their, um, is essentially their mixed-use commercial zone. Uh, and there is a prohibition for ground floor, um, any kind of ground floor residential use, whether that be single-family, multifamily, uh, whether it be long-term residential or short-term residential, there's, uh, no allowance for ground floor residential, uh, which would be allowed in this, this application, this rezoning. Uh, and the intent statement, you know, goes to the same thing I mentioned earlier, trying to maintain that commercial character, the vibrancy, storefront shopping, those sorts of things, uh, which is, um, uh, lost, uh, if, when, when you start transitioning from commercial storefronts and things to, to residential, uh, we might be looking at some of the wood here, for example. Looking at, uh, Salida, so it's not necessarily a, a, a main street environment, um, but they have more of a, a concentrated core. Uh, and they have, they have both a zoning and overlay district, uh, which prohibit, uh, so it's everything in the pink and within this, um, lightly dotted area. Um, all of that, uh, area prohibits ground floor residential use, again, whether it's single-family or multifamily. Uh, same intent statements, Salida's a little more elaborate in terms of maintaining the, um, commercial vibrancy of their, of their commercial core and not integrating ground-floor, uh, residential uses. So this is just for the purpose of looking at, you know, in, in, uh, in the character of Harrison Avenue from start to finish, from north, north to south, uh, what other similar communities, um, have their names, you know, with these areas zoned, and what kind of uses do they allow within those zones? Um, in terms of comprehensive plan compliance, this is the graphic that I referenced earlier, um, but in your, the future land use map of the comprehensive plan, this is Harrison Avenue. And this area, one block off of Harrison, is designated as a downtown designation. Uh, I can read this statement right here, it really speaks to having that character of the downtown character of Harrison Avenue uh, extend one block in either direction, so the property is located here. I will note, this is important, that future land use map also contemplates, you know, where the core residential areas, uh, should be in the future. Uh, you know, this is, you know, this is five, ten-plus years in the future. I don't know that this property is not designated, and the, and the surrounding properties are not designated within a residential, uh, area. So that is your, that's your code criteria. Uh, I want to provide one other consideration, uh, in that, in the, in the city planning profession, there's a term called spot zoning. Uh, and it's a, it's an important term, um, there's a, a book that's widely accepted as the, the standard for definitions. Um, and, and are you able to draw that, can I just, we did, or the means? Right, good?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, sorry, this is important for this slide. So, um, this is the, the illustrated book of developer definitions, I think it was last updated in two thousand, uh, fifteen, and it is the, um, the widely accepted, uh, standard for definitions, you can't have every single definition in your zoning code. And so you refer to this book if you have definitions not in your zoning code. Um, so what, what that definition says is that, and I'm just, I'm just gonna read this, so rezoning of a lot or parcel of land to benefit an owner of a use that is incompatible with surrounding land uses, that does not further the comprehensive zoning plan. Um, so that, that, that means the, the comprehensive plan. Uh, and the comment on that is that spot zoning, it may not be illegal, like per your ordinance, um, but it may only be descriptive of a certain set of facts, and consequently neutral with respect to whether it is valid or invalid, so the key word is valid or invalid. So invalid if it meets these three criteria. The first is, if it's a small parcel of land, that is singled out for special and privileged treatment. So you know that that is not, doesn't say anything about whether it's, the adjacent zoning is the same thing, it's just, are, when you're looking at the rezoning, are you just looking at one single parcel, and why are you looking at that? All right, the second one is, um, it's not in the public, public interest, but the, the benefit would be primarily for the benefit of, of, of the property owner. Uh, and then the last is that it's not according to the comprehensive plan. So again, this is not a code, code criteria, but this is, um, basically something that we need to consider in terms of what city planning profession says that you should or shouldn't have. So in trying to evaluate this, um, in terms of the first criteria, that what is being singled out, obviously, this is only one lot that's being proposed, um, and, and this criteria is, you know, does not speak to whether or not. The adjacent zone. Second criteria, um, that, that, you know, there's a narrative that's included in your packet submitted, um, from the applicant, it's part of their, it's middle requirements. Um, and, and, you know, the applicant is stating that, uh, their intent to offer is a short-term rental, which would, which would, of course, make profit. Um, I mean, it doesn't want to make profit with their property, of course, uh, but we have to go back to look at, you know, why is it being, why is it being singled out, and, and what would the applicant say in their intent to do that? Lastly, um, the action is not in accord with the comprehensive plan, as I mentioned, the comprehensive plan is not designated, this is a residential property for, you know, which is, is the guiding document for future rezonations. Um, so we're finding that all three factors, uh, for invalid zoning are present, uh, so that this will meet the definitions, uh, spot zoning per the industry standard. Uh, so that's, um, wrapping up here, uh, on page seventy-six of your packet, uh, is the, uh, the formal recommendation and the motion. Um, you know, also in your packet, you have the narrative from the applicant, you have a property survey. Um, of course, you have the staff report, and then the motion does recommend the find, uh, does reference the findings, and there are findings included in your packet on, on page eighty-nine. Um, the council would not agree legally, you must have a very solid finding, even if you have very solid findings included in the packet. You know, wrapping up, I'll just say that, uh, we, of course, want to support our, our local businesses, um, and, you know, the, the current business that's in this property is, uh, is a business that we want to support. Our charge is to, um, is to evaluate the, um, the proposed rezoning and its impacts, not just necessarily for the current property owners, um, for the community, and a year from now, five years from now, ten years from now. Um, and of course, um, your, your charge is to evaluate the application based on the code criteria. Uh, that's, that's it for staff, thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, we'll, we'll have questions for staff later on when we deliberate, uh, at this time, I would like to hear from the applicant.
Can I fill first?
Absolutely.
My name is Michael Shantel, my address is forty-five eighty-nine. That's Colorado, deal focus one. So I, um, want to begin with criteria number three, and just verification on that. So it sounds like, from my understanding, the house was adjacent to us, because we're on that for. So they're grandfathered in, um, obviously, not the one directly next to us, the, the one, the third house down. They are a long-term rental. If we move our businesses from eight twenty-one Harrison Avenue and out of the current building, are you gonna allow us to rent that, or are we exclusively supposed to rent it out as commercial since we updated the, um, the chart for uses for the retail core back in July, very quietly?
Those uses for the retail core have been in place for as long as I can remember. Uses for the retail core have not changed, the comprehensive plan defined, in twenty fifteen defined them at that time.
Yes, but wasn't there enough? Why?
Well, you know, I understand, it's. I understand, if you may answer.
Please.
So the table of uses that was adopted in, in, through extensive public hearing process. Though, so the use, there's a use that is not conforming to those uses, it is allowed to continue. So someone were to use that property, even though it's a new property, owner, and tenant, they can continue to use that property.
How it's been operated?
Yeah, how it's been operated, even though it's a legal non-conforming use. The, what happens is anytime, anytime the use changes, at that time, it has to come in compliance with your, with the city code, which is updated as of the next August. Does that answer your question?
I, sort of, so, but since we've been operating out of there commercially, like, you know, there's been a business in there. Like, we leave, we get the same, are we technically grandfathered in, because it's a house too, like, would be able to rent it out, and like the other houses happen?
No, because the use, the use is not current residential use, it's current commercial.
Okay.
So it would not be, it would not be a legal non-conformal use.
Okay. Those public hearings to update the table of the chart, the table of uses. Were we notified of those specifically, since we were directly impacted? I mean, it's to our detriment, you know, and it's only our property that will not have this.
The table of uses was the entire city. Table of uses wasn't just for one property or one zone, was the entirety of the city. And and, yeah, we, I don't even know how many public hearings we had, but it was a number of them.
I wanted to make a comment in regards to the spot zoning. I understand that you have a specific book, the codes that you go off of. And I just, you know, just from speaking to people in the area that are well-versed in, you know, zoning and planning real estate, liberals' trends and and other legal matters. They, you know, a number of them disagree with this particular AP in the spot zone, because we are asking to be zoned to the immediate adjacent zone. And it is not necessarily incompatible, because all the properties surrounding us are essentially residential. And I also want to point out on the short-term rental points that you made, I mean, we don't even have a license for a short-term rental, so we're not sure that that's even going to take place. We're having, making it a long-term rental, as we understand and know that legalese is in a shortage for.
Yeah. I would say, as I did in the planning and zoning meeting, the 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 short-term rental part of it, I don't even know why it's in here. It's irrelevant.
Yeah.
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 So we shouldn't even be talking about that part of it.
Right, I'm just turning.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Like I mentioned, right now.
Right, it it shouldn't have been in here at all, in my opinion.
Okay. Sorry, was my turn to thought about that? So the comprehensive plan, so for that block is just, I think, a little problematic, because they're obviously all houses. And I understand that the use of them will continue, but when the plan is revisited in twenty fifteen, what is your intent for our block? Like, do you specifically want it to be commercial, or are they supposed to be Victorian homes, the way they are? If my neighbor's house burns down, what's gonna happen? Are you gonna let them rebuild another house, or do you want them to build a business?
It's, in terms of the comp plan, that's, that's a couple of years out. And I don't, don't have an opinion on on what will happen with the comp plan in twenty fifteen, so.
Would that answer the question of our property burns to the ground, from a two-story square commercial building?
It's not gonna burn to the ground, is it?
There.
I'm just checking.
Okay, let me start. Okay, so, so as far as the comprehensive plan and you guys turning that, we'll walk into that. It should have been a public hearing, and yet, all of us that are affected should have been noticed about that, because my neighbors, Lisa and Eric Sides, they bought their house under the condition, knowing that that their house is gonna be a residential. And we bought all of our properties. I bought mine originally, and I worked with the planning and zoning. I came in here, it was funny, because when, when me and Chayton met, he asked if I ever been around this building, and I've been in business for twelve years here. My family's been in Main Street here for over twenty years plus. My parents ran restaurants up and down here on Main Street. I ran my business now for twelve years, and it's growing. It is third flourishing. I'm a huge part of the community. The youth look up to me, the Hispanic, the Latinos, people that ain't gonna be spoken for in this room here are spoken through, through me, through my business. I represent the Latinos and Hispanics of our town, and the working class of our community. And this town has always been built around the working class in the blue collar community. And the planning and zoning, and Buena Vista, how they have all that, their comprehensive plans, it pushed people out of their houses, long-term residents that live there for plenty of years. They're no longer live in their house. Now it has to be compliant as a business. And you're doing the same thing to people here up and down Main Street. And I do think that whole block was amended wrong, because I'm singled out. If anything, it was reversed spot zoning. I'm the only person on that whole, I, people complain about how bright it is. My neighbors constantly complain about my lights, and how bright it is, and and I work all hours of the day and night to keep that sucker on. And I'm working very hard, because I can't manage people, and I can't keep people working for me. So guess what? I'm hustling, and I'm doing everything I can do to keep my business open, and to keep it in my town that I grew up in. My grandparents are buried here at this, very side here. My family's Native American. My family goes back to the sixteen hundreds of being here in Mexico and Colorado. So if anything, I feel like we're being segregated and pushed out of this community, like they did in Santa Fe and New Mexico, and other towns where none of the natives are represented in their own town, because of out-of-towners that have no history of the town, coming in and forcing people out, who broke their backs to make it to the community they did. I think Airbnb's are being singled out. I think guided tours are being singled out, and things like that are being singled out. And I see the problems with it all. And guess what? I'm here for the community, and now I'm here for the people, and I know how many people could use that house. And I'll let somebody rent that house. And it'll be at a reasonable rate, but with my property taxes right now, I pay five hundred dollars a month on my property taxes, the way that building is assessed, I'm paying over two dollars a square foot for my property right now. I'm renting downtown in the retail core for a dollar fifty per square foot. It's a dream ideal location for a commercial building. If I were to turn around and move out of my building, I'd have to rent it for two hundred, or two dollars and fifty cents, just to make a turnaround, just to keep my lights on, just to keep my taxes paid. Who's gonna pay two dollars and fifty cents a square foot in town? My building's a two-bedroom, two-bath house. What business is gonna wanna be in a two-bedroom, two-bath house? My house, you guys wanna go back to preserving our history, historic preservation. This town is a Victorian town. It's a beautiful Victorian house. Who wouldn't wanna look in that window of that beautiful house? Now they're looking at me, working like a dog in there to keep the lights on. That's all you see in there twenty-four seven. But who wouldn't wanna see a beautiful Christmas tree, a family surrounded around the Christmas tree watching TV? That's what you wanna see in right now. That's what warms my heart. I don't wanna see businesses and all this, and all we're seeing up and down is law firms, real estate agents. There's no businesses. If I was a dispensary, if I was a liquor store, if I had morning, wanted to do the sneaks. But guess what? I'm a man of my word, and I'm coming here to do it right, how I should. And I came here, bought my license every way I should. I've been in business since I was twenty-two, I'm thirty-four. I grew up running a business here. My parents ran their pizza restaurant here. I grew up busting titties here. I remember when that place was a bike shop. I remember when that place got abandoned, and there was, there was cats living in that place when I came in there. And it looked like heck. There was weeds all over the place. It was painted ten different colors. The deck, you couldn't access the building. That building, I couldn't even breathe in there. There was asbestos. I paid ten thousand dollars to get asbestos mitigated out of that place, just so I could work in there. I couldn't even breathe in the place because it was so bad, let alone the cat urine and everything else of the businesses before. I'm doing everything I can to make this town better, and I don't know anybody that's more level with me. So if this is our, we want our town to run, so be it, but it's, it's a real hard feeling, wake up in the morning, think about yourself every day, and you realize you really wanna be in the town that you grew up in, and that your great-grandparents were buried in, and that you worked so hard to put it in the position that it's in now. It's hard to look myself in the mirror, and it's hard to, to just, you know, but I'm not gonna give up. I got so much young people looking at me, and I got so many other people. And it's my family's neighbor, and it's my family on this. And guess what? If he tells me no, and if something doesn't happen, I'm gonna open a business. I'm gonna figure out a way, because I'm a wrestler, I'm an entrepreneur, and I'm a dog, and I'm gonna figure it out, because that's me.
Thank you, guys.
Does anybody else have a?
Just a second. Yes, yes, yes. At this time, we will open public comment on on this particular request. If anybody in the public would like to speak on this, please come up, introduce yourself, give us your address, and you'll have three minutes. You can take turns.
Please make sure you sign up.
Yeah, please sign up there.
Okay.
Okay, so my name is Debbie Voltes, eighteen seventeen, Silver Eagle Court. And I'm just having a hard time understanding the opposition to the business move that Justin has tried to do. The move will hopefully be beneficial to him, but it will also be beneficial to the city. It would be counterintuitive to vote against this move, as he would be filling a vacant spot in the middle of downtown with a business that is viable to the community, and in turn, would be providing a housing solution in the existing neighborhood to a housing deficient community. It would be hard to imagine voting against this move. And then I also feel that comparing Leadville Business District to Solida and Buena Vista, there's a big difference, because those communities have designated main streets. And Leadville's main street is actually on Highway twenty-four. It's a highway that goes through the town. So I think that there's a little bit of a discrepancy there, and hard to compare those communities. And then I was just wondering if this is gonna happen with the business, and if you're looking down the road to what your vision is of what Leadville should be. So does that mean that the other houses, like Justin said, he's actually the only business on that street? The other places are residential and houses. So in a few years, are those people going to have to conform then, and their houses would then have to be businesses? And they would lose their homes, because they're now in a business district, basically. So it just doesn't make any sense to me, I guess.
Okay. Thank you, Dylan. Colin, next.
I'm Colin McPhee, I live at one ninety-two South, Leder. Turns out, I was actually on planning, zoning, planning and zoning in the Historic Preservation Commission back when all this stuff was starting. Now, at that point, that was a complete event. I mean, how it happened to turn around, come down, you know, off Poplar, and there was Vice Play. Long since. So when all this came up, that wasn't a business, wasn't a residence. And we all know what it looked like. Some of us know what it looked like. And Justin has done a heck of a job putting that perspective. Really, I don't see it's fair for him to have gone through all that work, to now just kind of shove it into his face and say, eh, sorry. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna do this, this zoning thing, which, you know, hey, I get it, I was part of it. I don't think any of us at the time imagined that we're gonna take this one little outline property and turn it into a name. It's true what Justin says. If you want street cred in this town, I teach at high school, if you want some street cred, go into his shop and get air credit. And then go talk to anybody else, any adolescent male, and you instantly have a missing out street cred. This guy is a huge influence, a very positive influence for people in this town. This new spot that you're looking at, if you can afford to do it, is gonna be an amazing spot for our kids who are in desperate need for something positive. And it's not just the elite few who go in, you know, who, you know, if you look at the stereotypical elite, it's not. It's, it's the other half of our community we never see particularly anymore, that are hanging out in his shop, that are looking up to him, and looking up at the notion of, hey, maybe I could be a part. Now, some of us remember what this town was like without a part, right? Oh, yeah, let's talk about you, BV. That was awesome. That guy was just off of that main drag down there. Oh, by the way, I don't think we want to be, you know, let it look like BV. We don't want it to look like, you know, Solida. We don't want it to look like Brackenridge. Right? And by the way, we're getting a little closer to looking like Brackenridge. Maybe if you took all these little houses over here, turned them into little big, nasty shops and and stuff like that, we could get closer. Maybe if we, like, tore down some of the parking underneath them, you know, and then we could have houses above that, around the floor. We don't want that. This is a small town. He was my student twice, bunch of times. She was too, right? We don't, we don't wanna, like, limit our, the, you know, people who've been here for a long time, especially when they got, file, they have. I respect the historic preservation. I really do. I really do. You know, I'm a big, huge fan, but in this case, at Pink Roberts, we had this outlier, this one little spot. And he's done such an amazing job of putting back together, because it wasn't, it was not put together for years and years and years. I mean, even when Vice Play was there, it wasn't worth much, right? And then before and after that, it was terrible. And every time you turn it down, there it is. It's done a bad new job. There it is again. And he's right. I'd much rather see somebody there. You know, and when you move business downtown, it's a hell of a benefit for all of us, it really is. And it's not just the stuff that we're seeing right here. It's the stuff that's coming up. It's the stuff where you got kids who are saying, hey, I can make a living here. And this is how I'm gonna do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Colin. Mr. Possage.
I would like to say I would support this spot zoning, because well, first of all, I don't think Tracy or Rebecca should be making these decisions, because I don't believe they're proper members, although I really admire the things that you do, Rebecca. And I really admire things that Chase does. I think he, Chance, he's incredible, right? The perfect job, best job. However, although the mayor pointed out that the comprehensive plan two thousand fifteen defined the uses, the mayor and his charisma got spot zoning affected when they allowed Melanzana to occupy the Oddfellows with two prohibited, things prohibited by the zoning code, warehousing and manufacturing on the retail core. And then the claim was that it completely complied with the comprehensive plan. Now, it's just unbelievable to me that city council violated the ordinances before Chance was here in giving, allowing spot zoning for the Melanzana to occupy the Oddfellows. I still can't believe that. It's just unbelievable. That should have been a restaurant, or a bookstore, or something like that, not manufacturing and warehousing of that prime retail space, okay? So now we have a fellow here that wants to do something with a building that he's reconditioned, and he's being denied it because of all these things that is benefiting him, it's not in the public interest. It is in the public interest to help this man and his family, and his man, like, sorry, a little sexist there. To help these people, it is in the public interest because these are long-term residents that have sweat and blood and died here. And they they should be able to have some type of a variation where someone like Melanzana shows up and starts a business. Sure, he's been here a long time, but he, why was it, why did that huge building, instead of being a restaurant or something like that. Is allowed to be manufacturing and warehousing, which are prohibited uses in the retail core? Um, I think it it should be allowed that, a variant should be allowed for this. Given the past precedent of not caring what the ordinances say. Given with Mr. Labey's charisma and to get new things off the list. Uh, I'm not very charismatic. When I come to one of these meetings, I feel like I'm getting out of a Huey helicopter and a hot LZ. But it's just the way politics is in Leadville. Thank you, Colin.
Thank you, Mr. Prestash. Anybody else who would like to make public comments? Anybody on on Zoom?
Hi, can you, um, this is Lisa and Eric Stites. Are we able to speak?
You may, please, go ahead.
Hi, um, we're at eight one nine Harrison, right next to Justin, and we just wanted to um, voice our support for Justin. Um, we are the lucky ones, yes, that are grandfathered in, but wondering if maybe there's some way that Justin can also be grandfathered in. His house was originally a single um, family house. That's what historically it was. So from a historic preservation perspective, um, that's what it originally was. He's done a beautiful job restoring and making it look beautiful on the outside. Um, and I just wanna also say that we really, really appreciate and love having Justin as a neighbor. And we know and we trust that whatever he does with the house will be good for Leadville. Um, he always checks up on our house if we ever need help, and he even cuts my twelve-year-old's hair, and he's the only one our twelve-year-old trusts to cut his hair. Um, so just wanted to express, um, that we support you, Justin, and yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Who else on Zoom would like to speak? Heather Lynn has her hand up. Heather, go next, please.
Sure, thank you. Um, yeah, I, I mean, all of the reasons that people are speaking so far about Justin. And what he's done for the community, obviously, all of those are absolutely true and and great reasons. Um, when I'm looking at this from a zoning, planning and zoning perspective. I I I too don't understand how it's being classified as spot zoning when you're adjacent to TR. Um, I disagree that this wasn't a mistake. I think that block, whether it was an intentional or an accidental mistake. Or 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 something that as we're further down the road, we maybe have to reevaluate. I think that whole block is a mistake to be in RC. I think it should be in TR. I think everything in there falls in line with what your TR zone wants it to be. Um, which is transitional. If if a, if a retail shop can go into one of those little houses and and make the dollars work, great. But right now with, um, I mean, even even if half prices, even at half prices. You can't occupy those little houses as commercial zone, as commercial properties and make the dollars make sense. So essentially what you're doing is hoping that the people who currently are grandfathered in just stay grandfathered in, which means then they're not occupying RC. Or yeah, RC as you're intending them to occupy it, um, and then Justin singled out. Um, it doesn't make sense. I think that 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 block should all be TR, um, in my opinion. So that the Stites and and everybody down the road can choose whether there's a small office in there in residential or just residential. Um, and if it's adjacent to TR right now and Justin's the only one applying for this rezone, I don't understand that spot zone. Classification whatsoever. He's he's adjacent to it. All you're doing is annexing him into the TR zoning, essentially. Um, yeah, I think it's a bummer. I think this is one of those things where, um, I also agree with the folks that talked earlier about Bonavista. I think it's, it was absolutely devastating to me to see people's houses have to get torn down. So that big buildings got built in Bonavista and Slida because that's what they wanted downtown. I don't, I don't believe that the community wants to see those little houses on that block torn down and big commercial built there. I don't believe that. Um, and I hope, I hope that you guys don't either. Uh, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Heather. Who else on Zoom would like to speak? Raise your hand if you would like to speak, please. Matt Graham.
Yeah, uh, I'm just here in support of Justin. Um, I just don't think that it's fair that you run a business. And you are able to remodel a home, put all that money into it, and then somebody to come in and just say, well. Sorry, you have to keep it as a business. Um, you know, it's Colorado, we have a housing crisis in general. So if somebody wants to make more housing, who are we to tell them no? Um, I just don't think that that's fair, and I don't think that that's very American, but uh, that's pretty much all I gotta say, and um, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Matt. Anybody else, if you'd like to speak to us, please raise your hand. Or just unmute and talk to us.
Hello?
Yeah, Ben?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we sure can. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanna say, also mention that, um, that Justin has been running a business in town, like he said. Uh, since two thousand twelve, so this would actually be the third successful location, all located on Harrison Avenue. Uh, so the first one was on six one two Harrison Avenue, which after renovating that and completely redoing it from the ground up. Uh, he was successful there for many years, um, and which also allowed for a new business to open up there. Um, since then, then he moved to the residence that he's at now. Um, from then, he's trying to convert that up into uh, living quarters. But, um, with that, he's also moving the business. Hopefully, he'll be able to move, uh, the high-end type barber shop into the Tabor Grand. Which will, um, add further businesses in the Tabor Grand other than just, uh, retail space. Or no, I'm sorry, not retail, but real estate spaces that's that's, um, taken in there, but also, but instead adding more. Um, tourism attractions, uh, that would, that would bring into that area.
Is that it, Ben?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, as Ben did, just if you wanna speak to us, just unmute and and let us know who you are. And you'll have three minutes. I'm not seeing any more, okay? Thank you. Um, at this time, I would, uh, entertain a motion to close the public comment portion of the public hearing.
My mind moves to close the public comment portion of this public hearing. Will say?
Is there any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Uh, at this time, uh. We are in deliberation, so anybody can ask questions, you can ask questions to Chapin, you can ask questions to Justin, um.
Yeah, fine, man. Um, right off the bat, I guess. Um, why was there not a consideration to perhaps recommend the applicant to request a rezoning? Of all current residences alongside their current?
There was.
Okay.
Yeah, that was a, that was a hot topic for planning and zoning.
Okay.
And so, uh, without getting too deep down the rabbit hole, uh, I think a lot of people were compelled by by what Justin's asking. Don't get me wrong, and he's not wrong. You know, there, if you look at both sides of that block from eighth to ninth. There are zero commercial businesses, but there are four homes on the west side and one home on the east side. And everything else is, you know, a church and a visitor's center and a city hall and a firehouse. So what was discussed is maybe the retail core shouldn't extend all the way to Live Street, as an example. Maybe it should only, and so both those blocks could be rezoned TR. And, you know, the the whatever the future holds, I I thought about this, you know, I thought, you know, what are the chances? Uh, that ten years from now, that's gonna be any different? And and I think the answer is not likely. Um, it it is, it is what it is right now, and so us wanting it to be something else. Um, I don't, doesn't really resonate with me. So the idea of rezoning from eighth to ninth to TR, I think would be perfectly reasonable. But that's not what, unfortunately, that's not what we have in front of us.
That was discussed, but not, is not pursued.
We can't, we have no way to pursue it. We have to have somebody, you know, actually, I'm not sure about that. Chapin?
I mean, why would, why would one individual there ask for rezoning the whole block? That seems a little odd.
Because it makes sense?
I don't know. No, I mean, there has to be a difference. There has to be a different mechanism.
All right, well, let's keep going because that that's a great question, and that was a a topic of discussion in planning those zones. What we did say to Justin is maybe you should apply to have that that block rezoned, um, but of course, that's a delay. I'm wondering, and I'm not a fan of spot zoning, and but I'm wondering if if we were to s- spot zone. Now and then rezone those blocks at a later date, what would that hurt? Because we would be trying to get to the same conclusion.
Here is my concern, and first of all, like, everybody's comments are, make so much sense. And I think that I eat, it, I I think something needs to change in this particular block. I am leery of doing, you know, let's rezone this single entity. Because of a precedent that it may set for other places that we may not be particularly, you know. In favor of having a rezone and then be accused of partiality, because what the city cannot do is show favoritism. Because you are a fantastic citizen, because you have history here, because you're an excellent businessman. That is not what the city should be making their decisions on. We should be making zoning decisions that make sense for the city. And what Heather Lynn said, which spoke to me in particular, is I also don't wanna set us up for having. You know, somebody sell their legal non-conforming property and be in the position of. Being required at some point to produce a business out of it, which will inevitably probably mean, you know, a a a. A substantial modification to the appearance or.
That would be different from, say, what what we heard happen in Beavie or Slida.
Right.
That would not happen here until a change of use happens.
Until a change of use happens, and I I just, I guess I'm wondering, is there, is this the right avenue? To achieve Justin's goals? Like, is there a CUP avenue? Or I know Mr. Prestash used the the word variance, which I know doesn't really apply to what we would be considering here, but is there a different? Is there a different avenue beside from doing a single lot rezoning?
The the other option is a proposed rezoning of, you know, a a larger area. Um, but it, you know, you're evaluating based on the same criteria, and again, you're looking at those properties not based on the property owner.
Mm-hmm.
You're assuming that property will be changed tomorrow, you're assuming that, you know, fire and wipe out all those buildings, and there could be new buildings proposed there tomorrow. So you're looking at future property owners, future uses, you know, at any point in the future.
So CUP would not work?
No.
So next question is just gonna seem unrelated. What is the zoning where the museum is?
That's, uh, here also.
So that's TR. So that that chart that you put up shows our, that museum would be okay in residential. But it's not listed in TR in the, in the chart. No, the, the two column thing where you.
Right, so it's in the, it's in TR, it's in the TR zone, um, but it's not, it's not a buy right, buy right use.
So how do they get by?
So, so then, so that's, that's a really important clarification. So when the zoning is applied, the zoning does, the zoning district does not have to conform to existing uses. Right, so you can have an existing use to establish your, you know, original, you know, actually make updates. It can, it doesn't have to comply with existing uses. So you can say, this is, whenever this property changes use, this is what we want to conform to. The base system use is changing.
So they're legal non-conforming.
Exactly.
So, is there a way to phrase this? Cuz again, I don't, I don't like the appearance of partiality. I don't like the precedent. But could we use this as a stepping stone, including the it, the intent? To look at rezoning this block?
You could, and the city can, you know, and take that initiative on. Again, it's, you know, based, based on your desired character of the community.
So we wouldn't have to have a request from a, a landowner. We could take that on ourselves.
So you could do that, yes?
All right, uh, thank you.
So we could say, this is sort of a non-conforming block with the rest of the retail core. And we would like to preserve the single-family home appearances and also Cosmo's place. Like, what? That place is so cool. Um, we would like to preserve that in in that. In the way that it exists right now, so we would like to consider rezoning this block. And understanding that within this consideration of rezoning the block, there is a time-sensitive issue. That would be helped if we did this in a piecemeal fashion.
Yes, the good, the city could take that on its own initiative.
Yeah, but I mean, we could, we could phrase it like that because, again. I think as long as i- if we as a city say our intent is to look at the rezoning of this whole block. And this is the first step of that because it is time-sensitive, and then intending to carry on. I think we'd lose some of that partiality appearance optics.
Yeah, I mean, and just like any decision the city council makes on on land use application, anything clause our judicial or judicial. You know, you, you're, it's always good practice to have a finding why you're making that decision.
Exactly.
Whether or not it's applying the code criteria.
Yes.
It's my recommendation that if the city did take that on initiative, you're responding to the means all the good criteria.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that thought's part.
In, in other words, you don't want to make an arbitrary decision. And so, so I always recommend that when the council makes a decision on a land use application, that is why I was putting good findings in your package that state. This is why you're making a decision, and it does or does not comply with the code criteria of all the code criteria.
Okay, um, I'd like to hear individually, uh, from City Councilman Tracy.
Oh, no, that's true.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Uh, I happen to love the approach that Dana is suggesting. I think that that whole block. Doesn't conform with retail core. It conforms more with, um, with TR. And, um, instead of trying to turn it all into a retail core, commercial businesses. Why don't we try to preserve the, um, the residential aspect of that block? And, um, granting Justin, the zoning change would be a step in that direction.
And I think, as you said, if we articulate that that is our attempt, and this is only a stopgap measure. Uh, because of the time-sensitive nature, I like that approach.
Yeah, and also it's gonna free up a house. Justin already has, uh, a spot in the true retail core. Took out, and it'll free up a house.
Okay.
Provide housing for someone, so I'm in full favor of the zoning change.
Rebecca?
I think it's three great examples of Victorian architecture. I would hate to see people try to force fit the commercial use and maybe change the integrity of those homes. And I think if I'm not mistaken, and Chapin's question for you, with the transitional residential zoning, there's an option. One could still have a tea shop in the ground floor and housing up above if they chose to. So I like the idea of this stepwise change in zoning, acting first on Mr. Volkes's property. And then more comprehensively on the rest of that block. Then we need housing.
True.
Super. I have one clarifying question. On this map, what does the dark red mean?
That's, uh, commercial item business.
Commercial.
Sales. Business zoning district, so it's essentially your more strict commercial, if you will, we have it on the north side of town from the downtown and on the south.
Okay, thank you for that.
It also is true on the south side.
Yeah.
After about Elm Street.
Okay.
Does that?
Okay, super. Thank you for that explanation. Um, I am too, was ready to suggest, uh. Uh, uh, the spot zoning with the intent to. with the intent to, uh, relook at the whole block. Where's the TR?
Hmm, go ahead.
I already said a whole lot.
All right. Um, yeah, I, I guess, you know, my initial feeling is why is this just not the application to begin with, but there would all be reason and why was there not a big push to do that? I already got my answer, but, um, I agree that this would technically, if we were not to have a follow-up, be spot zoning and staunchly against that. But also understanding that if it is the intent of council uh, to rezone that area and that is something that you feel that we can do in a timely fashion, uh, then I don't see an issue with approving this as long as there's movement towards, um, rezoning the entire area to TR, which is something I'm also in favor for. Um, I think the current way that it's operating just adds too much uncertainty for the people living there and it may create this uh, feeling of, you know, being scared to do anything else with their property, not just for them, but for other people in the area. Uh, therefore, um, in my opinion, also benefiting other people in the area as well as, of course, growing that uh, TR rezoning to a larger area. So I'm in full favor of having this be the initial start to rezoning that block with, uh, to TR.
Thank you. Tracy, you ready?
Yep. I understand where Chapin is coming from in terms of wanting to live up to the comprehensive plan. But when I look at what the comprehensive plan is suggesting for not only that block, but the further block between nine and ten, that's never gonna change. There's a big old house in the block and it's never gonna go away. So I think, that says, I think the comprehensive plan is wrong. Um, so I am sympathetic that you are trying to adhere to that. But I think that the comprehensive plan, um, defined those zones incorrectly. And so I do agree with, um, the rest of council that we should find a way to, um, make this whole block TR. And is there any way that we can put a condition on that? That we can't make it a short term?
Amen.
That's, you don't go down that road. It, it has nothing to do with this application. I mean, I don't love it either, but I'm just saying.
I, I was gonna actually ask to add two, two things. One is I, I would really, I would be opposed to a short-term rental on Main Street. I understand that's not a part of this. And I would also encourage, uh, uh, empower you when we, as a council, or at some point when council starts looking back to stay involved so that it makes it right for the whole block. You obviously have some passion, uh, and, uh, I encourage you to continue that and make it right.
Well, I'd like to say that, uh, you know, on planning and zoning, uh, we did talk about the, the dangers of spot zone. And, and it's, it's a slippery slope proposition because now you've opened yourself up to that possibility all around the city. Um, but I really like Dana's solution to this, uh, that, that you do that contingent upon a wider, you know, uh, effort to rezone that block. Um, I think that I can live with that. Uh, as long as it's clear in our explanation why we're doing this and that we're, we're not doing it, uh, you know, for one person, but rather for that entirety of that part of the city. I'm also, I agree totally with Tracy because the comp plan was put together in twenty fifteen and make no mistake, that I remember one of the meetings had two hundred people in it. It was an amazing process.
We have to redo that, don't we?
Yes, we, you're supposed to redo it every ten years. So twenty, twenty twenty-five. But, you know, that one had been, was twenty-five years old, the one before that. So, um, but, but the, the comprehensive plan got a number of things, uh, wrong or made assumptions that now eight years later simply aren't true. And so I'm not compelled by the comprehensive plan. It needs to change anyway. So I don't find that a guiding light in terms of, of how I think about the city. Um, so I, uh, I'm very pleased with, with this conversation, uh, because I'm very compelled by Justin. You know, and what his family has done, that's, that's on a personal basis. Uh, but also the fact that, that that's a row of four houses. Single-family homes. And it just so happens that, that, um, that he sits at the end of that row of four houses. Lori, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, uh, one of the things I wanted to, to guide us back to is you're making a land use decision. You are not making a business use decision. So I, I think that we need to make sure if you're making findings, you're not making erroneous findings. Uh, I think what, if you are going to change the zoning for a piece of property or for a block, you're changing it for all the permissible uses. And so just when you're making your comments that you like a certain business, um, flip that around, you cannot zone because you don't like a particular business. So I want to guide the council away from things that will be erroneous findings, that would be bad. Uh, so what I'm saying is when you're, when you're making your decision, you're making it on land use. And if you find that the table of uses, all those uses you feel are appropriate for, um, rezoning, then that should be your criteria, whether or not you like the business. If you had a business that you didn't like, that came before you, you need to make the same land use decisions based upon all the permissible table of uses and where the property is located and the criteria that, uh, Mr. LeChant's put forward regarding, you know, uh, is it, and, and I, I don't want to ever get in a position where we're saying we are spot zoning. Because that's a terrible thing for a city to do because then you were going to be asked to spot zone all over. So I think the concept of looking at land use and looking at a broader picture are good ones. Um, but you should be focused on that rather than one particular business owner or one particular use. Because I think those would be bad findings.
Thank you very much. Um, I would like to hear if anybody has anything left before we go to a motion.
I, is there a way to modify the current application? Uh, to include perhaps to start with so that we're not spot zoning the, or?
No, that, that is not in the public record.
Okay.
And now that, but we'd have to go back to planning zone. We'd really have to start over.
Yeah.
Under the best circumstances.
But we can start over with this. I mean,
Yeah.
I think this discussion is, has paved the way for a, a rational and business character independent discussion of, of what, what conforms with this particular block.
So could we not then continue the hearing to a different date with modifications to the next hearing? Or would that still violate?
You, 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 you're only supposed to continue this hearing for additional information. And if it doesn't solve the, the problems that hasn't been publicly noticed and, um, planning commission could be right.
Very good. Very good. I, I would say in, in, in the, uh, from the planning commission, we, the, we did think about this. I don't think we, we, we reached in as far as city council has uh, to say this could be the first step in, in, in a rezoning of the block. Uh, but I know that, that planning and zoning, at least if I took the temperature correctly, would, would, would be very much in favor of the block being rezoned.
Could we just add like to the motion, you know, like?
Yes.
Whereas this, this particular structure conforms with the character of the block and in allowing this, uh, this lot rezoning would promote, um, the, would promote, like, promote that conformity, promote that character. And whereas it's the intent of council to pursue rezoning of this entire block, we approve this application.
You, I did. So, uh, so except for the last thing you said, you could just, I mean, you, if
I, I guess.
The, you have, you have ten criteria for approval and most of what you just said is in that criteria.
Mm-hmm.
So you would, you're, I would strongly recommend that your finding state that your, that this application needs all ten criteria. And.
Do I have to list those criteria independently?
No.
I don't think you have to. I can, I can just give you the code section number, the ten criteria.
Are those the ones that you showed us with the conforming with health and welfare and safety? Or was that consistent with the comprehensive plan?
What I, I showed you in that, in that table with green and red, we just had two or three words to summarize. But the, the criteria in your staff report, you know, there's like a sentence or two for each criteria. Um, I can, you know, I can even read it in the record if you want to get that part.
The seventeen point four eight point oh one oh by right conditional and prohibited.
I think we'll just go forward to the, to the code.
Okay. It's, it's seven, it's on page eighty-four of your packet. It's, it's, uh, seventeen point nine two point zero three zero.
Eighty-two?
Seven, uh, eighty.
Right, eighty-three of your packet.
Yeah.
What was, what was the, the code? You get seventeen point nine two?
Seventeen point nine two.
Oh, okay.
I got you.
All right, I can save your breath.
It just, it takes me so long to back page on this thing, getting rid of this.
Okay. Dana, it sounds like.
Zero three zero?
Zero three zero. That's correct. Okay. Seventeen ninety, ninety-two, zero three zero. I haven't read that one here.
Okay.
I just see that it's consistent.
This is gonna be a good one. I'm glad Dana's doing it.
No, Christian's, Christian's been typing. I've been writing in my bad handwriting. Okay. Uh, that's fine.
Jesus.
We already mentioned motion. Uh, Luna and Lev moves to approve, uh, the proposed rezoning of uh, eight twenty-one Harrison Avenue, PL dash twenty twenty-three dash zero one four. Whereas all the findings meet that all ten criteria of code seventeen point nine two point zero three zero are met and that, uh, the current home is can, uh, has contingency with the rest of the TR zoning. Um, with the intent that council will rezone, uh, the rest of that area to TR.
We both have on to that?
I think that seems pretty clear.
Green seconds.
Any other discussion? We're all okay. Okay. Good. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protim Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Grant.
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Lev.
Yes.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember LaRaxson.
Yes.
Mayor Lot.
Yes. Good work, everybody.
And thank you, Chapin, for, because I really appreciate your, your, your clear and detailed clarification about zoning versus these other considerations, like being that. I, I just, I appreciate it. It helps clarify things.
Sure. So, so the next step is the city will, um, task our consultant, who does the G I P, who does the zoning map. Um, and, uh, we'll, we'll task consultant with, um, rezoning that one lot, uh, to TR. And then that zoning map will then get published online, uh, and, you know, we'll have the official copy here as soon as it goes.
Okay. And then how do we go about tasking, uh, planning the zoning uh, with the rezoning process?
Uh, I mean, I can, I can answer that now. I'd recommend that we, we start that discussion at staff level and then, and then proceed. I, I can't even through that question.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I just, mostly curious what, what the process would be.
The process?
Yeah, I just, I'm just curious what the process would be.
Uh, we.
How do you, how do you, you know, institute that process? That's.
It would, it would essentially be this, um, this, this similar process that we, we started over again. Would, of course, want to not, notify all the property owners and rights. The public notice would be expanded from what it was for this application.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but it would go through the similar process with Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council, uh, public hearings.
But would we, as a council, direct staff to take, take up this next conversation with planning and zoning?
Yes, that, that's the part that I just want to discuss the staff level with, with Lori, uh, and, and then come back to the council on and see if that needs to be in some sort of resolution or whatever.
Okay.
Or, or if, if it's very informal. So I just want to get that dialed in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, good. Thank you guys very much.
Yeah, thank you. Mayor, can you maybe close the public meeting?
Um, now would be a good time. It is now, uh, eight forty-seven and this public hearing is closed. Yes, please do.
I know, I think I need another.
Hey, Lori, Lori, I was gonna say you might just wanna put everybody on mute while we're taking the break, otherwise we hear everything.
Put everybody on mute while we're at break.
Okay, not that.
Hey Chief Daly.
Dan. He's on break too. I hope you can talk about it right now.
Yeah, I just was wondering, do um do your firefighters routinely get get tested for PFAS?
Um, so the only the only thing that we get uh. There's a certain amount of cancer screening that we do do through our NFPA uh fifteen A two physicals. Does that does that answer the question? I don't know if they're.
In terms of the the polyparit- perin polyfluorinated. Something or other substances that are on the news?
Yeah, the A triple F, um not specific, no.
Okay.
All right. Everybody's ready? Oh. Right. Last one, my last two.
We really need about it?
Technically not until next year, on the tenth, that's our new deadline.
Right. Okay. Now. Next up, we have resolution number thirty-four, series twenty twenty-three, resolution adopting and entering into. The trust agreement for the Colorado firefighter heart, cancer and behavioral health benefits trust and taking other actions in connection therewith. Uh Lori, you gonna brief us on this or who's taking the lead?
Chief Daly, did you wanna bring them on or did you want me to do?
Uh, I can um, why don't you go ahead Lori and then I'll I'll fill in.
Okay, um I've tried to put everything in your telecommunication form, um obviously the heart insurance is required by the state of Colorado, so that's one thing that we have to do anyway. So the Colorado firefighter trust um kind of swooped down and said, hey, let's give it a pool insurance for this. Um because it became a law and then the cancer insurance, uh first of all, heart insurance is a requirement, but it's also reimbursable through DOLA. So the premiums that we're paying for that will be reimbursed um for DOLA and then the cancer insurance, kind of same thing happened, it's not actually a law where you have to have that though. But there were issues um with firefighters having to literally jump through some hoops, um try to get cancer coverage, they were asked a lot of questions. This took it out of workers' comp and this this makes it stand on its own, they also in twenty twenty-one uh added breast cancer coverage to this and then last year in twenty twenty-two. Um offered thyroid cancer with this as well, so it's just kind of a no brainer, uh the very cheap insurance. We also will get um discounts on our workers' comp insurance if we have this insurance. And another part of this heart, cancer and behavioral health, the behavioral health is free. Um and they're automatically automatically enrolled as soon as they become a firefighter, so that just to give them no, no problems, no premiums. Um so that's my nutshell on it, uh Chief Daly wants to add anything and you guys have questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Uh, thank you for for, thank you for that Lori, uh um wonderful explanation, the only thing that I will add also is when we were talking about the peer support program. The the behavioral health portion of this plan and this trust will pay for the training for the people that are gonna go and get trained in the peer support. Uh program itself and that's roughly about a thousand dollars for each individual and we're gonna have three go initially in February of twenty-four.
So this takes effect as of what, the first of January?
Actually, if we pay the uh invoices that are included in your packet, we are covered as of uh November twenty-eighth. It's paid pro rated us because that's when we actually gave gave them our roster and they were able to sign people up, so the invoice, you know, okay. If we pay it like it is, we will be covered from uh November twenty-eighth to June thirty, I believe, and then we will do another six month to get it onto our fiscal year properly.
Well, but just, I mean, it looks great, what's the benefit of this uh as opposed to workers' comp? There's some of these issues.
I'm sorry, what?
Well, what's the benefit of this as compared to workers' comp, or is why did they go to this next step?
The way I understand it and reading the stuff that I read when I first found out about it, it's because it was so hard for the firemen to get. Covered under the workers' comp, they literally made them go to second and third opinion doctors and that this specific kind of cancer is covered. They wanted to say, argue that you probably didn't get that on the job, you could have gotten it somewhere else and just they all die away. You know, it's hard to have this paid on the day you die, no, it's kind of the same, so.
I can answer this, in the in the legislative history for the law that was passed, they essentially identified the mayor's exact question, that workers' comp coverage wasn't sufficient for. Um the firefighters for these particular areas of coverage and this was intended to cover that gap.
So you say we'll get a, you know, some sort of rebate from workers' comp, is that because now they're taking over some things that that would have been workers' comp issues?
That the discount that workers' comp will give us after many years, but those things won't be up maybe for workers' comp.
Okay. You need a big discount.
I'll talk about two other things, one, it needs to be um its own. Line item within the operational budget. Uh to show clarification um and also with the resolution, but then also. With that, for this year, because it came so late in the budgetary sessions, what what we had discussed, and I think I discussed this with Lori and the management board. Is that we would just reduce this amount, uh there's two different amounts, the the heart and then the cancer, we would re- re- excuse me, reduce that amount in the in the insurance currently. To make um an offset currently in the budget, so we don't have to add this additional amount this year, knowing that we're gonna track it for twenty twenty-four. And then um uh see whether we're over over or under in that insurance line item and adjust for it for twenty twenty-five. And then also, you know, get reimbursement from the DOLA portion of the heart.
It sounds like we don't really know exactly how it's gonna work, it's okay with me, I mean, if it's a new new program, we have to track it for a year to find out. What these costs are gonna be?
Uh, the the costs are in the packet, it's uh I think the last two pages.
It's pretty set because it's per person per year.
Any other questions or comments?
So that's not currently in our, and the budget is is.
You said it would be an offset, so it'd be a zero.
So we would just see it as a separate line item next year, okay?
Well, we'll we'll put it as accurate on this budget.
But it just won't.
It will offset that cost.
Yep.
Who knows if that's accurate? You feel like a lot of those budgets. Okay. Uh, if there's no more questions or discussion, I would certainly entertain a motion.
Grant needs to approve resolution number thirty-four series of twenty twenty-three. A resolution adopting the trust agreement for the Colorado firefighters' heart, cancer, behavioral health benefits. Trust and taking into other actions in connection therewith. Thomas seconds.
There were.
I've never used the word therewith.
That's good.
It's a good one.
Um, any other, any other discussion? Roll call please.
Councilmember LaVaxton.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil.
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Lev.
Yes.
Councilmember Grant.
Yes.
Uh, yes, Eric Johnson Green.
Yes.
Mayor La.
Yes. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, everybody.
Next up, we have resolution number thirty-five, series twenty twenty-three, a resolution of the city council of the city of Bloodville, excuse me, adopting the twenty twenty-four annual budget. Um, the rest of the law, um. I, you know, we we've wrestled with this budget, um uh Crystal. Um has worked with me in terms of our workers' comp went up thirty-eight thousand dollars and it turns out that our um our SIRSA was up twenty thousand dollars. And so I've allocated those across departments in the budget, um this is where we are right now. I have. Some confidence in it as a budget, but we're not really gonna know until we get the assessors uh numbers. Of what property tax will actually be with the new regulations now, we're going to go ahead and declare our mills at eighteen point nine. And then what Lori uh Simonson would like to do is then to do a tax rebate program through the treasurer's office.
Well, hold on, hold on, hold on. I actually, two two things, it's not a tax rebate, it was essentially if we see the numbers from the assessors' office and we feel like there should be additional tax relief. What I want to explain to everybody is there's still the option of doing that, but uh essentially for the budget and for declaring mills, you know, the recent legislation extended the deadline for both of those to January tenth. If you, you know, we only have two meetings between now and January tenth, tonight and January ninth, and so January ninth is really cutting it too close, we think, is that. You know, we've never had an issue before, but if for some reason we didn't have quorum, we wouldn't be able to pass something on the ninth and we just didn't think it was worth the risk. We're making some very, the mayor's done a lot of numbers crunching with regard to this budget, but really, you know, his emailing you to you today really spelled it out, the property tax is the only wild card in this. And we're as confident as we can be right now and we may not be much more confident after January third, so uh given that, I think we're. We've beaten the budget to death over the last many, many work sessions and uh I think we're as comfortable as we can be with it at this point.
Any thoughts, Crystal? Okay.
Any concerns?
I guess I'm not really seeing that. But it's the uh. Three hundred thousand for the.
It is. Yes, it is.
Where?
It's in the costs for um. For city hall. And it is. Line item. Uh one forty-six sixty-nine oh six.
Sixty-nine oh six?
Like, it's supplemental budget appropriation and so it has three hundred thousand dollars plus eighty-three thousand four eleven dollars, yeah.
Six nine oh six?
One forty-six.
Oh, there, okay, I got it, I got it.
That's correct.
Yep.
And then, as we said, those other costs are in the departments uh for the E nine one one board. So it's got a hundred and seventy-three thousand in the police department budget and uh fifty-nine thousand in the fire department budget for E nine one one. Yeah, they they were big hits, big hits.
You. M- mentioned. That you were going to do this, but does this reflect like in terms of. Staff openings, let's use the police department for an example, they have two openings, we have funding for, I think, seven officers, so did you, did you. Scale this for.
I did.
No salary for the empty positions for like the first quarter or something?
The first quarter, I, there there are four open positions for officers and one for police chief.
Okay.
So uh the police chief, I show hiring in the second quarter, don't know if we'll do that, but that's what I have in terms of. Salary for two of the police officers I have at the end of the first quarter and then other two the end of the second quarter. Uh cause that to me, I don't even know how we get to police officers with the current atmosphere, but nonetheless, you have to, you know, make some assumptions. I also did that with the planner one, uh would be Chapin's ad, uh that that would start uh at the end of the first quarter. Cause he has to go through a a a process.
By any chance, did you take it the full step and scale the insurances as well?
What's that?
Did you scale the insurances?
No, I really didn't, but you know, the the insurances are are based on full staffing to begin with, but I didn't scale them because. The insurance is what it is, I mean, like SIRS and workers' comp are gonna necessarily change, you know, because because we send them. For workers' comp, we have to send them um an accounting of all of our payroll and they base it on that.
Okay.
The actual charge is based on that. Uh, as as you know, the county did kind of ask me about the animal shelter and I wrote him a kind of a detailed note back and sent the budget and. And explained why we had gone up, you know, from a hundred and thirty thousand to a hundred and sixty thousand. Um and of course, we half of that is ours as well, so it went up thirty thousand dollars for each of us. Um but, you know, I, he was, he was fine, as far as I know, he's fine with that explanation, he didn't, he didn't, you know, push back on that at all. Uh fire department budget, so a lot of the additions to the fire department budget were their suggestions. And so we accepted that and and kind of left it alone.
And with the fire department, I think we we learned that working through the fire management board, which is how the. Intergovernmental agreement with the county was drafted is that really the budget's supposed to percolate up through the fire management board, which has representation from both the county and the city. And it's supposed to be agreed upon at the fire management board level and I think that's really what what worked a lot better this time around, we followed that process and. You know, the county was at table at all those meetings and it seemed to go really well.
They surprised us, knew that, actually, it surprised me a lot. Um, they they were, you know, a hundred and eighty degrees out from the previous year, so I appreciated that, it was, it felt pretty nice and we we got things done.
Where is, and so this hu- heart, cancer. Behavioral health.
It's not in there at all.
It's not in there at all right now.
We will drop a line item in for that as a separate line.
And take it out of that, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Take it two different, but out of the same.
Got it, thank you.
Does that mean the pardon motion?
Pardon me?
Does that mean the pardon motion?
No, it it doesn't, it's overall number.
If anybody would like to make a motion, I'm okay with that.
That's a public comment, you can be allowed to listen to it.
Is this a public hearing?
No, uh so just to clarify, just to clarify, this is um not a public hearing on the budget, we have the public hearing. At a previous meeting, what our uh agendas say is for any other item, not a public hearing, public comment can be at the mayor's discretion.
I couldn't remember, it was supposed to be a public hearing, if you would like to comment, please come up and comment.
Thank you. Okay, there's one nine there, Steve Press National. I'm disappointed that uh one of the previous chief of police's recommendations for a twelve member police force was not being followed, but. And other things, nineteen eighty-nine climax, uh engineer told me that climax melatonin was the most easily rarefied melatonin in the world. Somewhere in the past, I read an article about how melatonin was being experimented and developing super semiconductors, that is, nucleating melatonin matters. And that melatonin matters had special properties which enhance semiconductor efficiency and a strong matter. The Denver Post article of Friday, December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three states that the Chips and Science Act directs fifty-two billion. In federal dollars to boost the use competitiveness in the semiconductor and restore the country's leadership in chip manufacturing and advanced and other advanced technologies. Um in a region, the article defines, it means it's all developed. In context, as comprised in Colorado, Wyoming and New Mexico, there exists an entity called Elevated Quantum, a coalition of more than seventy companies, educational institutions, federal labs and other organizations that band together, bring quantum tech up to the region. Starting in early two twenty-five and across the decade, it falls elevated bottom labs will seek to help launch more than fifty companies, drawing more than two billion in capital investments to the region and train more than thirty thousand workers in Colorado, Wyoming, and New Mexico. Quantum technology requires precisely measuring and directing the movement of atoms. Quantum technology when applied to computers offers with promise of processing power and speed exponentially beyond what is possible today using semiconductors. Okay, so that's many, then three quarters. What I'm proposing is that either now or sometime in the near future, we budget a quarter of a million dollars towards buying into this um, uh, concern because we have a lithium at the source. My understanding is that to fully re- rarefify uh, melatonin, we test on it somewhere either in Massachusetts or Connecticut. So we could build a facility like that here and uh, somehow possibly build other uh, utilize maybe the, 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 some of the buildings that we have that are sitting vacant, like the high school and middle school and, and refurbish them. But draw this uh, piece of enterprise into Leadville. I, 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 I see there's, there's room for this here to, to uh, enhance our economy. So um, hopefully we can think about this in the future. And uh, but I would like to see a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget allowance to uh, get this thing going.
Uh, to Mr. Press Thatcher's point, whether or not city council decides we're down that road, we do get some relief in next year's budget. You know, the, the three hundred thousand dollars, the regional housing authorities, one time spent, at least, maybe, maybe, we, we don't really know the answer to that. Also, the transit authority uh, that goes from eighty-three thousand to thirty-eight thousand in twenty twenty-five. So um, there's, there's kind of hope on the horizon in terms of this budget being uh, as difficult as it was this year. May not be seen in the future.
I'd imagine that the regional housing authority would go back for another thirty or three hundred.
I was gonna say, but
uh, we'll see in the future.
Home moves, the first resolution number, series twenty point three, resolution certifying and levying the mill.
Nope.
And levying the mill levy of the city of Leadville.
It's the one before.
Or resolution number thirty-five.
There's virtually no paperwork for certain budget, I blew right by it.
Oh, that's why, sorry, there's no pro's motion for this.
You just gotta read the top.
Home moves to adopt resolution number thirty-five, cities twenty point three, a resolution of the city council of the city of Leadville adopting the twenty twenty-four annual budget for the city and appropriating monies and remuneration of the budget for the calendar year beginning on the first day of January twenty twenty-four and ending on the last day of December twenty twenty-four. A little bit of lab seconds.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Proton Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Tom.
Yes.
Councilmember Grant.
Yes.
Yes.
And number zero.
Yes.
Councilmember Laxton.
Yes.
Mayor Al.
A weary, yes. No, don't get me wrong, this is uh, you know, you know, this has been, I've, I've actually enjoyed this challenge, but it has been a challenge, so.
I think we're treating on that challenge, so I think it's in my role.
Yeah, yeah, guess what happens next year?
Oh, Dana's not making the budget next year?
I'm thrilled you're in.
Uh, this time we would entertain comments on anything the public would like to talk about.
Are we not, we're not doing the resolution?
You've got to do something else.
It's on my agenda.
The thirty-six?
It was a recent ad, if you printed that later, or, or, that's probably one.
That's what Tim was trying to read.
I, I, I was trying to feel what in the world he was doing.
He was prophesying the future.
In that case, take it away, Mayor Proton.
What? I, I think Tim really wanted to.
Yeah, then let's let him.
Home post of previous number thirty-six, series twenty twenty-three, resolution certifying and levying the mill levy of the city of Leadville for twenty twenty-three to compare the cost of dominance of the city of Leadville for their twenty point four budget year.
Great, green seconds. That's very important.
Any other discussion? I, I would encourage everybody to pay attention to this because my, my worry is we get down the road and we forget about all the citizens of Leadville who, depending on how these numbers come out, would still get hurt. Yeah, and you know, and we want to make absolutely sure that we're doing everything we can to li- to limit that to what we have proposed, which is twenty percent. If, if it turns out it's more than that, then we have to figure out how to help them, that's the, the bottom line.
I know, uh.
Good, yeah, you do know what, so that's it, my discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Laxton, yeah. Councilmember Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Wannale.
Yes.
Councilmember Grant.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Green.
Yes.
Mayor Al.
Yes. Okay, now, public comments, anything you'd like to speak to that?
Well, um, if you watch Star Trek, The Next Generation, and when they go into the French pub there, there's a picture of Charlotte Corday hanging there. And Charlotte Corday uh, set free the soul of a man by the name of Marat. Um, Judy Collins sings a song uh, about the French Revolution in which she uses a dual chorus. And the first time you listen to it, you're a little puzzled, but then you're starting to figure it out. So when I was at college, I wrote a poem uh, that has a dual chorus, and I would like to dedicate this to all the people that voted in the election in Leadville. Fire fell in love with water and water said no. Can vaporize me into a mist and of into the air I go. Night fell in love with morning and morning with rain, gathering the last of her skirts as faded the setting sun. Water cried, I have no form, few I just can't be, you'll just take and take from me, why can't you let me be? In the winter I will be a pond, frozen for the skaters, and beneath me all official dream, unmolested by all the dangers. Morning smiled for warm, warm smile and awakening the day. Night cherished this moment so, and together they would play. Together they danced in forest glades where new snow had been dropped, where they never argued to talk about love, for someday all to stop. Fire fell in love with water and water said no, gathering the last of her skirts as faded the setting sun. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, mayor's report, I really don't have much, except this is my last city council meeting where, where I will uh, deliberate on the ninth, it will be very brief, and I'm looking forward. I'm looking forward uh, to, to you being our new mayor. I'm, I'm excited for you and for the city, and uh, we'll have a solid city council.
Super excited about a city council.
Uh, no, you're gonna, you know, you know how I feel about city council. This has been a strong city council, not always in agreement, that's okay, that's the way it should be. And I hope that continues in the future. Council reports.
Uh, tomorrow is our regional housing authority meeting. Grayson did a great job facilitating our conversations jointly with the county. Uh, his report is out, I don't know that it's been sent to council, I imagine it hasn't. But um, I can plan on reporting on that in our next city council reports. Uh, we'll be debriefing it for about thirty-ish minutes at the regional housing authority meeting, so if you are interested, um, to, please, oh my god, please feel free to come. Uh, anyone's invited, they're open in public meetings for anyone to attend. Will be um, a- after discussing uh, with um, why am I blanking on your name, oh my god, Jackie, jeez. I was discussing with Jackie, um, we, it's my understanding that basically everything that the board needed to do to get the project rolling is now done, and that was all falling on Jackie's plate to get the infrastructure started um, and all that, I'm excited probably approving the RFP. Um, so that's great news, um, and that will give us time to really focus on some of the recommendations that were given by our consultants uh, to be able to really s- uh, solidify good foundation for this board that I think is incredibly necessary. Um, I, it's gonna be a lot of work, it's gonna feel very redundant, I know, for a lot of the board members, but um, and it won't be direct work in housing and policy work. However, all that said, I do think it is incredibly important to set that foundation so that we can have a strong um, continuing board without uh, the need of having people to scramble and uh, try to start from ground zero, so to say. So I'm looking forward to that, and I hope I can continue reporting on that to city council.
So what time is that, is it the library?
Uh, yeah, it's at the library at the AMAX room at five thirty, uh, it starts and uh, it'll end typically, we end pretty good, we're pretty good at ending on time at seven thirty.
Or seven, thank you. And thanks for, both you and Tim continuing that work. You know, I, I just hope we build a house, well, please.
She was a great start.
Uh, yeah. Okay, enough of that, any other city council reports? You know, want to talk about your, your?
About Rebecca and my freezing cold adventure.
Yeah.
We, we, we were able to tour, at, at least from afar, the proposed site for this gold and silver reclamation project where they would take mine dump waste, learn some new vocabulary from uh, one of the um, one of the areas uh, up off of East Fifth and take it to the mill, which is out by the Leadville Sanitation Water Treatment Plant. And had a really informative guide who walked us through the whole proposed project. I think as, as far as the city i- is concerned, there's a little bit of city roads that would be trafficked on with some of um, with some of the truck, very small amount. I think maybe in a larger standpoint, just as residents, the, the impact um, on what they're proposing up there for part of move, uh, uh, the moving of the mine dump waste um, would impact some pretty major recreation pathways um, up East Fifth where it turns into um, one and then two A that connects East Fifth or one over to um, County Road Two. So I'll be interested to see where, where this, where this goes, but I think the, the city should be uh, at least have our ear to the ground very closely about what's, what's developing, because even though it doesn't really impact city services per se, I think it impacts city residents quite a bit.
Well, there's a safety issue, you know, and I, I understand what they're doing. Uh, one thing I heard is they're doing twenty-six trucks a day, is that what you understand? And so are they doing those two an hour for twenty-four hours or, or maybe for twelve hours, or how are they, how are they spreading those out?
So what they anticipate the so it, it's based on the entire load removed, right? Spread over like how much they can move over a particular amount of time, over three hundred and fifty days? And then how many truckloads they anticipate that would be, but I think we sorted it out to be about two, to, to, two to three a day.
Is that what they intend, though, I guess that's my question.
That's what they
We can make that calculation.
My, they did say that they would plan to s- to cease operations during like the main event weekends, because some of that is at least where part of the fifty has been. And so I don't know how, I haven't done the math to think about like how many more truckloads would that shift into the other non-race days since like every weekend in the summer is something, event.
I guess the intent is to spread it out over time.
They intend for, for Correct, they would intend and they would like to work during the winter months because apparently there is less, less dust concern then. But those two areas are ones that are routinely groomed for skiing and, and snow biking.
Yeah.
Um, but they would want that, turn the, turn that into a cloud vehicle ready.
Well, thank you for going out there, I mean, I, I'm interested at this point.
Yeah.
This is the CJ K Mill.
Yeah.
So they, uh, just within last year, they had a commission and land use permit in Lake County for their operation on South Highway twenty-four. The county did refer that application to the city.
Right.
And city did, we did provide comments um, that addressed some of those concerns. I'm assuming this would be a similar application uh, hopefully to the county land use in terms of a commission and use permit, they call it here.
Cause I think what he said is like they're one permit away from doing, because they have a whole separate operation on the slag piles to turn that into um, aggregate.
Oh, really? So there actually be an operation up on the slag piles, not just removal of those piles and take them down to the mill?
The slag piles down by the mill already, on the black side, right over the highway.
Right, right, it's, no, I'm talking about up on the east side.
Yeah, so the slag is separate than what's going on. Project, the one that, that that you were
Okay, thank you.
Uh, one question about that, was there any talk about, because they kind of refused to talk about it at their open house, uh, the environmental impact on removing the mine ways? Uh, that is a question that was prompted multiple times, including by me and person seemed hesitant to talk about it, because it wasn't part of the presentation.
They did address the permitting and approvals that they had through CDPHE um, in addition, and looked into um, whether or not they would need an air permit because of dust production, um, whether it seemed like they had, like they had, they've been going through the motions to make sure that, 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 that their operation will be appropriate in the environmental.
Right.
And they also, you know, like they are taking the tack, and this is sort of the public messaging, that removing that is beneficial environmentally in the end, because then they would renovate or restore, once they get down to dirt, actual made of dirt rather than.
I, I guess, you know, my, my concern, and this isn't a question for you all, but just a general statement, um, is that in moving the towns, I haven't personally seen anything, and maybe they do have something with CDPHE. I haven't been able to verify anything that would say, yeah, waterways wouldn't be like disturbed in any way, water's still gonna flow the same way, so we're not gonna be creating new water streams of this, you know, hazardous material that could potentially lead into our homes, which I don't know, I still feel like there's still some issues with that, but uh, I, I guess in deserving the land, I would have some fear of potentially creating more of a issue in the short term.
Gentleman was, was really actually clear about the, the required procedure where once they start removing the dirt, they are responsible for managing and, and s- essentially siphoning off or maintaining any runoff, so let's say they dig into the dirt and it rains, like anything that comes down, so they would have diversions to a temporary pond um, to, to manage the, the water coming off of those.
And that's up on East, not
Correct, correct. And I don't know, add to that, but there's, there's a whole process with um, with how you capture and retain anything that comes off of the piles.
What we do know is they're tightly regulated, you know, that's whether or not they adhere to the regulations, that's another story, but
Right.
We know that Climax has taken this very seriously. Okay, thank you. Any other council reports? All right, next up, meetings planner. Um, I just want to point out, we'll take off the second and put city council the ninth. Um, also, there's a fire management board in the fifth, and that's something you and I talked about, but you may not be able to be there.
Oh, yeah, I, I, there was a race that day, so.
Okay, don't worry about it, uh, we're just really gonna try and make a decision. Uh, if, if Chief Daly is, is, has, is well prepared, we may be in a position to make a decision on the purchase of the type six bus truck. We may be in a position to make a decision on the, the purchase of the type six bus truck. Any other changes to the planner? In which case it is nine thirty-two. And this city council is adjourned.
Congratulations, congratulations.
I have really enjoyed this, this part.